We'll go ahead and call the special meeting of the Board of Finance. Please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance.
Here's your ground zero.
Over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. We have a request from the revaluation company to adjust our agenda. All of this is a special meeting. I just want to leave you in there. So without objection, we'll let the committee go first. Before we begin tonight, I just want to give a quick remarks from the chair. First of all, thank you to Simsbury Media for filming today. Very grateful for your help and presence. Thanks to Amy and Francine for their work with on the budgets and the grant list. I'm sorry Francine isn't here to say that, but she's been working very hard. We're very grateful for all of her work. So I hope someone will whisper that in her ear when she gets here. Bert and I both attended the Board of Education Budget Workshop on February 4th. I want to thank Amy and Matt Curtis and his team for the excellent workshop. It was very helpful. Amy, can you please, I talked to Matt, I didn't get it. Ask him to please forward to our board a copy of his presentation of the budget to his board.
Sure.
The power plate. And also to post that on the town budget website. As we approached the budget, Amy did update me that we have not yet completed the Assessor Performance Audit, RFP. And Francine will get to that after the grant list and budget preparations are done. I wanted to publicly thank Linda. She circulated a draft of an RFP, pulling together some best practices that other towns and communities have used. And we've given a copy of that to Amy. We'd ask Amy and Francine to just show us a copy of the RFP before it goes out. We've seen how hard Francine works and how invested in her office helps all departments. And I think we can say, and I'll just get consensus from this board, that we anticipate it will be in the fiscal year 2024 budget. So we should plan on that. For our clerk, I'd ask you to record all requests from Board of Finance members. And without objection, our board will treat them as requests from the full court. So I give to our clerk who are doing the minutes. And with that, we will move on to the revaluation, I guess, discussion. This came from a suggestion from our Director of Finance that we have a presentation by the revaluation company on their findings. This was, we've been waiting on information since really November, trying to understand what the grant list is, what the new grant list growth is in terms of economic development, how that translates into dollars, and how that differs from the revaluation. Revaluation is more reapportionment of fair share, who pays what during the taxes. It doesn't actually raise revenue. But new development does raise revenue. That's new people. So we really need to understand that difference. And we wanted to understand the initiative that the Board of Finance took in seeking to capture, that had been done but not recorded. So we want to understand that. The other thing we're looking for to understand is what is the impact to different categories of homes? Like a 250 home, are they going to see a 20% increase as a medium? A 350 home, are they going to see a 30% increase as a medium? 450 homes? So that we can understand when we get to our modeling, whether people are, whether the majority of people in town are going to see a tax increase or a tax decrease. For the public during a revaluation, often some people pay more and some people pay less after it's been reapportioned. And that's just a function of fair share adjustments. Economic development grow the pie for everyone and cause everyone's taxes to go down a little bit. So we're trying to understand that. We thought we'd begin. If you could give us a brief overview of the process, a summary of your findings and any trends you observed, and then we'll get into the specifics of the numbers that you know.
So, hey, I apologize for my voice. I got hit with allergies right before this, so I apologize for that. Basically, your town went through a revaluation, and what we found was an average increase of residential properties in the upper 20%, so about 28% plus or minus. Just to give you an idea how that compares to some of the other towns or cities we did, you come on the lower end of it. We had towns and cities that went up over 40% and one that went up over 70%. So just kind of give you an idea that your values were solid going into the reevaluation. So you didn't see a drastic increase like some of those other ones did. The values were founded based off of sales in a one-year time period, which was from October of '21 to October of '22. That's what the state requires we use as our starting point for sales. So the increase you're seeing is based off of the market, the current market right now that you're seeing in the real estate field, so.
Can you talk to us about the different categories of homes? Not, if you say the median is 28%. We heard from our assessor. Francine, you missed all the accolades I gave you while you were there. Sorry. You'll have to watch it on TV later. Now that you're here, thank you personally. You said the median increase was 28%. We're really looking for the different categories of homes. So if you could walk us through what categories? Francine had mentioned that in the lower, in the 200 range, they were seeing about an 18%. And in the higher range, they were seeing some upwards of 35 to 40.
Yeah, I think the, so when you're looking at the market as a whole, the homes that took the greatest amount of increase, if you would, were your smaller homes. So your, you know, your ranches, your raised ranches, your starter homes, because those are the easiest ones on the market that, in this market, could turn over very quickly. They were bought with cash, a lot of them at some points. You probably saw multiple offers. So the smaller homes are the ones that started off, excuse me, with a higher percent increase because they were the most desirable on the market. As you got into the median-sized homes, I think we saw roughly not as much of an increase, but again, we saw an increase as well. Again, based off of the sales. And then on the higher-end homes, one of the things that we paid attention to was based off of, you know, the sales, we set our values, but then the assessor even went through and looked at them even more finite to make sure that, you know, they were coming across as a fair market value. You asked for actual, you know, dollar amounts. We did send an email with all the different classes. As far as the homes go, we just, we didn't print it in time.
It's a couple.
It's a lot of pages because I would have to, and I didn't have time. I was trying, I just finalized the grant list and just signed it like an hour ago. So the listing that they did, the extract that they did, was like all the properties. I mean, you're talking like thousands. And then within each category, like the different, like ranches, Colonials, Swifts, they gave us a median of all that. Now, I can take that and doing some of the reports that I'm going to do for you guys and for Amy, I can take that and then give back, you know, as a, in my reports for later on.
Is that what I'm looking for?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're looking for. Thank you, Amy.
Yes. So I think I did do a quick update, but before I have that information, so.
That's good enough for doing.
Within the categories, when you're seeing something extremely high percentage of increase, keep in mind it could have been an improvement to the property. So it's not that that property just went up, but there was some type of improvement to justify that.
So we say, looking at that, and that's trying to see what we can tell from that. Help me, maybe we can't. The majority of the homes in Simsbury are seeing, are valued at 250 to 300.
That's some of my, the median.
And the next, 329 to 384. Then we have a large number in the smaller range, and they had, this is different than we were anticipating. The smaller range is now coming in with a 30% increase. We thought initially those were going to be 18%. So.
Yeah, but you're talking about a lower increase, so it looks.
Right. Right, it's lower dollar number but higher percent.
Yeah.
Precisely. And then I'm trying to think what the majority of our homes range, probably in the.
I would just call it the 250 to 329. That's, that's 55% of your housing stock.
Okay. So when we get to the modeling that I sent Amy, if you could help us incorporate some of those, so that we can project into what a tax increase will look like.
The next one, yeah.
These ranges, if we could tighten them up and more like the 250 to 350, 100, $50 ranges is almost too much information probably for us. But I want folks to take a look at that. So we're seeing really the 384 to 400 had a 26% increase, but nobody's seeing the 20% increase that we thought some people might get. Is that a fair observation?
It is. It's typical for the, for the market that we're seeing, not only in your town, but other towns as well.
In comparing the towns, were they all observed, I'll call it, in the same timeframe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the state requires, the town, do you have a cycle?
Yep.
So those towns are, you know, your cycle, it's the same thing. They have to follow the same guideline, same sales criteria.
I will open up questions from our board, because then, I mean, we have a ton of questions. We presented in advance, but.
We have them here now.
Yeah. Okay, do you guys want to, did you like to give us an executive summary?
Well, one of the questions you had here, the first question that we received had, sorry, I can't read on here, were there changes between 350, 390 had to do with the, sorry, I tried to read this.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand with no new construction or upgrade. So the state has a, we, several different requirements. It wants the sold and unsold test, so we have to make sure that the sold are being treated as the same as unsold. But what we do, and you could obviously interject because I do more of the operations piece, but what we do is take a look at all your sales and extract data from that, that then gets applied to all the homes, whether they're sold or unsold. And we have to make sure we fall within a certain range. So that's how we are confident that the property that did not have sale got treated the same and that they were treated the same. I think that answers the question. I'm not sure who came up with the question, if that answered your question or not. There was a question on here about the, within the household, how we, I guess, I'll say touched each one. So I kind of gave a breakdown. So I'm sure you may have heard at this point that there was a tool, Eagle View, that we use, and there's a program that they generate called Sketch Check, where we're taking up aerial of the existing properties. We play our sketch that comes out of the database over it, and then it highlighted red if there's a discrepancy, so someone added addition. That's going to show up as red, and we can measure and add that addition, see what it is. So we changed 278 properties from that tool. Your client, your taxpayers had the opportunity, when they sent our data mailers in, to request a virtual inspection, where we could look inside their home if there's something that they really wanted us to see. They didn't utilize it that much. We only had nine taxpayers that wanted us to see the inside of their home, but we did that. We went out on the field to view 766 properties. That would be either because there was permits on there, or the sketch check is great, but there's just some things they can't see, a tree shadow would ruin that. So if we can't make out the data, then we have to go inspect that in person. And we sent out 8,266 data mailers, of which 46, almost 4,700 of them returned to us, which was, I think, one of the highest of our 10 towns that we did, and the max return rate from Simsbury on that.
So you visited 700 homes, is that what you said about?
In person, yes.
And, so that's less than 10%, right? Out of our homes, is that right? Is that typical? Are we required to visit individual homes, Francine?
So what we did was, and send, we sent out a data mailer to all the properties. So that's one way to try to gather, you know, information and verify the information, the data that we have. So with that, then we took those and then went out. That's, this 766 is just what they did, the inspector, they did. We did a lot more, I mean, we did, you know, from our side, and since Frank came on board, which was in September. So it would have been nice to have him earlier on, but, you know, he's been out quite a bit too. So, so this is the data from the reval company.
Yeah, this is what I can capture from what we're collecting, but I know you chose to do your own new constructions and certain things that we discussed. So there were more touched, but this is what we touched.
How many additional, would you say, Francine, that you, you guys have viewed or visited?
I'll have to do an extract because I can't even tell you at this point.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good tonight, thank you.
Hundreds?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Is there any issues we might have had, especially as we got to the later part of the game, we would send, you know, to Francine to kind of double check for. So she was on top of a lot of that information, ongoing, but especially when we asked for it.
I did put in my notes here, and I understand this didn't make it too, it is hard to give you an exact number of what was touched, because there could also be overlap.
Yes.
Depending, you could have a permit and they sent a data mailer. So it's really hard to narrow down an exact number, but I was giving you statistics based on what I could measure.
Is it fair to say that 90% or so, or 85% are based on, than external factors, comps, what you've seen or from self-reported information?
Yeah, so for every sale, I didn't even think about that part. For every sale that's on the market, we do look at every MLS sale, and we not only looking at value, when the values team is doing it, but we're looking to see what else can we pick up from, from all of those homes that were on the market.
Like pictures and interior.
Yeah, the real estate agent really gives you everything you need, as you know, I'm sure, so.
Yep.
So how many homes were sold in Simsbury that way during the period you lived?
Yeah, I was going to say, if I, you're probably looking at about 15 to 20% of your, because, you know, I think it was about, this is a guess, I don't have the exact number, but I'd say between 250 and 300 for the year, that one-year period.
And then you guys sent out sales verification letters.
Yes.
We sent out sales verification letters prior, prior years. And when we get that back, that gives us, my dear, you know, do we need to go back in, you know, and look into it a little further if we don't have the information we need from that? So then that, that's not reflected here, so.
Do you benchmark against some of the sites like Zillow or Redfin?
We, we do reference them, but for us, it really comes down to the sales. That, that's really our lifeblood. They have to be warranty sales, so they can't be, you know, between family members, things like that. Has to represent truly what's, you know, happening in the market, arms-length transaction.
So you look at the actual sales and that determines a neighborhood value? Is that sort of how that works, or?
We, we look at every sale. And what we do is, we, once we get all that information, we build our cost tables based off of that. So obviously, we don't have them all right at the beginning, so as the project goes along, we adjust them, the more sales that come in. And that would encompassing changing possibly land rates for a neighborhood, or, you know, values, price per square foot, things like that in our table. So again, the sales are everything to us when we're looking at that. And some people may think, you know, it's like an appraisal, we, we come up with three sales to how we value their house. It's not the case. Like I said, we look at every single sale in that time period, and even a little bit before, just to see, kind of give us an idea of what the market did before that as well too.
So do you have summaries for how many new business developments, improvements to existing businesses and improvements to existing residential properties?
That's not part of the reval.
We didn't do the commercial.
Right, commercial was a different.
Yeah.
So you just did the residential.
Yes. So Chris, who's probably trying to, did UniVal, they did the commercial. But I think your question, because there was a question that was asked on here, they had to do with personal property. This, this reval is for real estate, primarily. It has nothing to do with personal property, but.
So do we have the information? I mean, what we've been asking since November, we wanted to understand what the new economic development capture was?
So you want to know what the difference between the increase without the market increase?
Yes. Yeah, just on, if there's, if there's where a non-reval year, what was the grant?
2.3% increase.
I thought it was 2.3 million? Is it 2.5?
No, it's 2.34%. And then generating approximately 2.3 million in additional revenue without the reval.
And so how does the initiative we took with you, Francine, factor into that? So that doesn't count as the new grant list? That's just new reval? You were looking to capture 3 million in new?
Okay. Well, that, I need to do separate extracts because that is a totally different, that you're asking me. A lot of it had to do with when we bridged the permit system into the CAMA system, where we picked up a lot of permits that weren't even in the system. So that's something that I'm going to have to extract separately. I have not, that has been set aside. I had to really concentrate on this to finalize the grant list and the reval. So that's going to be a totally different, I can't extract that from the reval.
But that's not for fiscal year '24, that's for fiscal year '23.
Pardon?
That was for fiscal year '23.
She was.
So the, you guys funded the position contingent on the fact that she could get an additional 3 million in grant list growth for '23.
But can we just move on and let them answer the questions for this part? So they can, you know, and then if there's anything else, I'll say we can answer other questions, if we can do that. He's got a flight to catch, he has it, so. And then
So how, on some streets, there were, I imagine there are outliers, like one of these is not like the others. How do you flag outliers? If everyone else on the street increased 28% and someone else increased only 20, do you take a second look there?
When we set the values, that's something we do. We'll, we'll look at, like you said, the outliers, the ones that went up more than the average, the ones that maybe even decreased. And we, we look to see what could possibly cause that. Some of the things that, that caused that is, if you see something that went up more on the street than, say, someone else did, there's a good chance that possibly the old value was too low last time. They may have gotten an adjustment last time with BAA or something that nobody else on the street got.
BAA.
There was something like that, yes.
BAA.
Board of Assessments Appeals. So when that happened five years ago, we come in, we look, if anything still applied, you know, that, that was a negative factor, we would have left it, but if it, we couldn't figure out what it was for, we would remove it. And that's why you might see, like you said, if the whole street went up a certain percentage, if someone went up a little bit more. Again, revaluations and equalization from five years ago. So that's why you'd see the increase, decrease, maybe now the opposite of that. Maybe it was valued too high last time as well too. So there's a lot of factors that would go into why it would be a little bit different. But, you know, we, we did look at them to the best of our abilities.
And how do you secure, I mean, there are people who have access and are putting things into the system. What security measures do you take to ensure that you can't be hacked, that someone isn't
Sure.
benefiting from?
Well, we are, if you know our company, we're two companies. We're quality data and equality. We're tax software and revaluation.
And I'll answer that question. Nobody can go into the system and input anything. There is no access that way.
How, how's the system updated?
Well, we do. I mean, it's the assessor's office.
Only the assessor can do that. So they give you information and only you input it?
Exactly. Or the reval company. Nobody, it's not like, where they can go in, log in and enter, make changes on their own, it doesn't work that way.
Yeah, we're in the middle of a reval that whole year. She has her database in the assessor's office that they're using, and she has access to our database, which we call the reval database, which we're using to update data. Data mailers coming in throughout the entire year, updating it. And then at the end of the job, when we're done, we send mailers, et cetera, we turn that database over to Francine, and that will be her only database, so.
And then you enter it, so it's secure on your part.
Yes. Is that the question, did you think, or is the question where there are some software programs out there for other reasons, where individuals can log in and put their own data in? Is that what the question kind of refers to?
No, I'm thinking back many years ago into Simsbury High School, when the kids hacked and changed their grades.
Yeah.
So you can understand, is your system secure? Can someone go in and hack your system and change the value?
This is, we're putting our CAMA software onto the server that you have here, and then you could access the server.
And your system is secure itself? People can't hack your system and get in and change their values?
I mean, anybody could probably, but just like where I was going, it, quality data basically has almost every single town in the state for their tax software, and they've never been hacked once. And we run on that same platform.
Okay. We happen to have our cybersecurity expert, a national cybersecurity expert on this board.
I've been biting my tongue. Not knowingly, intruding.
Do you have anything to add on that or ask?
Well, no, I mean, anything could be hacked.
Yes.
And you can't always find that it has been. So I, I, it's the absolutes around here that I'm, I know, you're, to your best, to the best of your knowledge, you have not been penetrated, and to penetrate it effectively, they would also have to get into Simsbury system is what I, is what I'm here.
Yes. And did you visit tax-exempt properties or take a look at tax-exempt residential properties?
I have to, all, all properties.
And how do you evaluate those? Is that done differently?
Yeah, that's done a little bit differently because you don't have sales too often with exempt properties once in a while. So what we do is, we go on a cost method. And what I mean by that is, there, there's a national standard that's out there, it's called Marshall and Swift. And it's, it's a cost book, basically, that's developed for the whole country, how much it costs to replace certain types of buildings, things like that. So we'll use something like that to come up with, again, price per square foot, apply them to the, the properties in town. And again, use the common sense approach, make sure nothing's going up, you know, 600 times or down the same. So again, because there's no sales, we use the cost method through Marshall Swift.
Can I just ask, you're talking about relevance, relevant values on the street or in the neighborhood or in all of Simsbury? And I'm just wondering what the macro picture is. How do you have access to other towns in Connecticut? In your introduction, you made the point that we saw changes in Simsbury that were similar to other towns in Connecticut.
Yeah.
I'm curious, is, how do you have access to the other towns in Connecticut?
Sure.
And what ones are similar to Simsbury? What ones were, had larger increases in real estate values and lower?
So how we have access is, in the year that you had your reval, we had other towns and cities going through the reval.
Were they our clients of yours, or do you have access?
Clients of ours, yes.
Okay, how many clients in Connecticut do you, how many towns do you have in Connecticut?
Total?
Yeah.
For the reevaluation, just about 50.
Okay.
Yeah, throughout the whole state. And we only deal with Connecticut too, on the reval side, so.
And what towns saw evaluations change in a similar pattern to those in Simsbury?
Percentage-wise?
No, names.
Names.
Based on percentage.
Or AVAR.
Oh.
Farmington did have, and they have our software, but we did not do.
Right, different company did that. And I believe their percentage was in the 30%, only because I, I talked to the supervisor.
Okay, well, you said other towns had changes similar to those of Simsbury. And I was wondering what those towns were.
Sure. And what I meant by that was more on the percentage base as far as based off of their old reval till now. North Cannon was one, that, that's right off the top of my head. They had about a 29% increase. And they had similar characteristics in the sense that when we came in and started looking at the sales, the sales were in the similar range. And what that shows us is a confidence that the values before us coming in were kept up with. To give you an example of the other side, we did Waterbury as well, which is a city, but they went up 70 some odd percent. And the reason for that is, again, Waterbury was depressed for many years, but when the sales started, again, smaller houses, multifamilies, there was a lot of those sales, so, and they did not keep up with their values as well, because it's a city.
Yeah, I understand the methodology. I was looking for peers. North Cannon is one.
Okay.
Although they have multimillion-dollar homes, not quite here.
And Barrills and Farms.
Sure, so for town, like Warren and Roxbury, we're smaller towns, again, not as big on the commercial side as you guys, but they went up about 30 some odd percent as well too.
Warren and Roxbury?
Yes. Yeah. So you have some more higher-end homes out there as well compared to, but again, they just don't have the commercial base that you have here. And Ridgefield as well too. And they were, I forgot their percentage.
Because the fact that, again, the values were so kept up there, they were committed to the lower.
Mid 20s. Yeah. So Ridgefields are in the mid 20s.[1770.12] Again, but again, the, the values were kept up and they met all the statutes we needed to pass.
And did you do commercial real estate?
We, we have, yes. I mean, not here, but, right.
You did not do that for us?
No, not here, no.
Do, when do we do that?
It's done.
Who did that?
Chris Karen, who's, he's on Zoom.
Yeah.
Could we hear from Chris on sort of what he found? We're interested, we've seen a huge growth in apartments. We'd like to understand how they're valued and...
A lot of, a lot of new apartments being built.
Yeah, so can, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, Chris.
Yeah, so we did the municipal valuation services, did the commercial properties in Simsbury. Just to give you a general overview, Francine gave me some questions that you had had. And I'll just briefly go with them, starting with the apartments. The commercial properties are approached the same way that the residential properties are, where you have a cost approach that's market adjusted based on sales. The, the one main difference is that we also develop an income approach to value. So we'll look at the actual income expenses that are submitted by a property owner. We'll compare that to income expenses that are submitted for nearby properties that are similar. We break the commercial properties down by use. And so apartments are handled together, retail's handled together, industrial and office are handled together. And then there's subcategories also. So in retail, the fast foods will be handled together, the banks will be handled together. And so we're trying to make sure that, you know, given the sales and given the expense data that we're given, that the values make sense for that property and also makes sense when you compare it to other similar properties throughout the town. And we had access to sales in Simsbury. We also have access, access to sales throughout the entire state of Connecticut. We have subscriptions to the MLS. And we have all the residential sales and all the commercial sales that are on the MLS. For larger properties, we're listed in CoStar, which is a commercial MLS. So we have access to that and that is a nationwide service. So we have access to commercial sales of apartments all throughout the country and like every, every property type all throughout the country. One of the questions was, do different results, different methods result in different taxes? The answer is no. The cost approach, the sales approach and income approach, which are the three approaches that appraisers use, there are three different legs to a stool. So they, they all should support around the same value conclusion. Some properties in Simsbury, the income producing properties, were valued on income and the final value was via income. But the cost approach value that we had there is usually reconciled plus or minus 10% to that income value. Properties that were not income producing, or occupied properties, tax exempt properties, they were done, as was mentioned previously, they're done based on the cost approach. We subscribe to Marshall Valuation Service, cost annual, we reference that as well as there are some sales of these properties, although limited in the, in the Connecticut market.
One question before we move on. A lot of residents have mentioned that the rents in Simsbury have gone up quite a bit. How does that factor into your revaluation assessment or at all?
Oh, it definitely does. So if you're a property owner, let's take apartments because that's the one category where we've seen rents really spike in the last few years. That goes to increase the value of apartments. You have income and expenses and then you have a cap rate. The return that investors could want on that property, which reflects its risk. So for apartments, we had really two things that have been going on. One is that the rents have gone up quite a bit. And the other is that apartments are really the darling of the investment industry. They're the one category where because the rents are increasing and because the rents are anticipating to continue to increase, then investors are really competing with each other to get apartment properties so the risk is not seen as significant. So the cap rate is largely below, which pushes up the value. So the sales that we've seen for apartments. And the apartment is the category that's gone up the most in Simsbury and throughout the state of Connecticut, when we look at the other municipalities we do work in. It's due in, in part because the rents have increased and they're continuing to increase. If you're an owner, you want your rents to increase, the best line comes to you.
If I can jump in, the, the one thing that I would add is especially up till 2022 in, you know, kind of an economic period of free money, that's not, that hasn't been the case in 2022. So the offsetting factors of your growing income and your low cap rates are rising interest rates, which we've seen throughout most of 2022. So that's going to have a deleterious effect on your values. It's not purely income, it's also capital markets. And as you know, nobody's going to buy, you know, at a cap rate of four and a half or five when their borrowing costs are 7% unless they feel as though they're going to grow their way out of that. That would be the only thing that I'd add to your analysis, which I, I thought was very succinct and thought out. Thanks.
Yeah, is, is it possible for me to share my screen?
Sure.
I'll go through the shot. So that brings up an excellent point. Okay, so we, I can't share, but this, let me just tell you, we did last...
Hold on, hold on, Chris.
Hold on, we'll get it for you.
Okay.
All right, give it a shot now.
It's a lot of trusty.
We know him.
This is a, this is a chart that, that we did for a presentation we did up in Hartford. And what this shows is exactly what, what we were talking about.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
I didn't touch it.
Hold on, Chris, hold on.
Okay.
Our cables.
It was doing great.
It was doing so well. There we go.
There you go.
Yeah, speak quickly.
All right, go for it, Chris.
Okay, so what this, what this shows is the bottom line is the, the effective federal funds rate. Right, so this is the Fed increasing interest rates pretty significantly over 2022. And the other four lines are the cap rates for the four major categories of asset class. The one, the warehouse is gray and you can see going across, warehouse barely moved. So even though the underlying interest rate is increasing, the cap rate really didn't increase at all. Apartments increased a little bit. For some reason, suburban office went down a little bit and then retail just went up slightly. So the only reason I bring this up is that, this, the point that was just made is the point that we were hearing during informal hearings, when we were doing the informal hearings from property owners. And it is true, and I think we're going to see this next year, that the cap rates are going to move and then, of course, the cost of borrowing is going to negatively impact the value of these properties in 2023. But the information we were seeing in 2022, particularly with regard to apartments, we had some pairs, properties that sold in 2021 versus 2022. They still showed an appreciation in price over that time period, even though the interest rates were going up. So I think it has an impact, but it's not a one-to-one impact, let's say.
Can you summarize?
What was the, what was, I'm sorry. What was the la, what was the last time period on that horizontal axis?
It was just through 22, January 22 through December of 22.
For, for the full year, okay.
For the full year, yeah. There's, in the, the cap rates were taken from the price waterhouse Cooper, of course, has reported.
Yep.
Invested in great properties. But apartments, talking about the different asset classes, that was another question that was asked. Apartments definitely increased the most. They were, I don't have the exact figures, like the grant list was just signed, but over 50%, 50 to 60% was the apartment increase. And part of that was, there was some new construction, right? The Ridge and Talke, and Mountain, and some other things that were, you know, that boosted up that number in addition to just values going up. Industrial would be the second asset class that did, did well. Industrial, while not seeing the huge appreciation that we're seeing in the apartment market, it's been pretty steady. They weren't really hit by COVID. People continued to work in, in industrial during COVID and it seems to be a fairly strong asset class amongst investors. And we're, we're looking at like a, a 20% increase there in the industrial category. Retail, and these are over a five-year period we're talking about. Retail has been hit hard. Apartment stores have been hit hard by online shopping. Retail in general has been hit hard. But a lot of the retail you have in Simsbury is along the main streets. It's local, it's neighborhood centers. People are still going grocery shopping, still getting their hair done. So we didn't see a decline in retail. We didn't see a huge increase either, like around 10%, 15% over that five-year period. And then office is the asset class that has been struggling the most. What's mostly struggling in the office market are these large Class A office buildings that are easily accessible off highways and are easily substitutable. Like if you hop on, on 91, 84, any one of these highways, and you go through exits, you go to this property, that property, those have been hit pretty hard. And there's quite a bit of uncertainty as to when the five-year leases come due, whether office tenants are going to be renewing, given people are working at home and that's acceptable. Some companies are bringing people back to the office. So in general, the office category is the least favorable, although you did see an increase now of about 5 to 10%. And mostly because of, most of your office is not this Class A office category on a major intersection between our towns. It's going to be, it's mostly local office, which is doing pretty well. So are there, are there any questions that you, you'd like to talk about? Turning the office or commercial categories?
We had asked for the list of the top 10 taxpayers. Were you able to get that?
That I will provide you again. Then I had to wait for the grant list to be finalized. So that will be provided along with the rest of my reporting next week.
And how many site visits were made to businesses?
Was that, actually, I am having problems hearing you, but was that site visits?
Yes.
Yeah, how many site visits?
Yeah, so I, I personally viewed all of the properties during my field review. There were additional properties that Francine had requested that we actually go and inspect. So we did inspect, I think about a dozen properties that Francine had wanted to get into because she was unsure of the date on those. So we did do that as well as I looked at all of the other properties. If they were retail centers, I would go into them. So during field review, we did look at everything.
Some specialty ones where, you know, we really needed to actually go in and review that hadn't been in quite a while, or something I had picked for Chris to visit.
I'm still unclear how, how you would characterize the, or characterize the, the increase in value of the new apartment buildings in Simsbury. I followed your methodology, but what's the conclusion? I mean, have they increased aggressively in value over the past few years?
Yes, yes, they have. They have, they have increased aggressively in value 50, 60% over that five-year period.
But that was what I...
And we had some good sales, too.
Which is consistent with what we're seeing throughout the state. We have, I have two firms here. I have a revaluation firm, we also have a fee appraisal firm. We do these for, you know, banks and cases and all different types of, of reasons. So we do fee appraisals and we do mass appraisal. And we're seeing throughout the state that apartments have really, the values have really increased over the last five years.
Did you say 50 to 60% over the last past few years?
Five years.
Five years.
Five years.
Five years, five years.
Francine, this is more for you. Are you seeing appeals on those?
Well, we had the informal hearings, all right? So now we're going to start the board assessment appeals. So those have started to come in. The notices, the final notices after the informal hearings were mailed out today. They were mailed out today, right? Those. So we'll find out, some of them were adjusted. We'll find out in the next, you know, week or so, how many decide to go for assessment appeals from that point.
And just so you know, you had 3% of the, of the residential population homes come in?
For informal?
For informal hearings, for the residential.
Was that, is that considered high, normal?
Normal, yeah. We, we average between about 2 to 5% in any particular year.
And for businesses, Francine, similar?
I don't have the tally. How many, did informal hearings for commercials?
Oh, I'm not sure how many commercial...
From the report I was looking at today? That's not because I had other things, okay?
Some others were affected by other reasons on that. So I think it was about probably a couple dozen.
And you said you did not look at personal property during this?
No, that has not, that's not part of it.
So after we're done with you, we'll turn to Francine on that, and add some updates on that. Open it up to Mike?
Yeah, the only other thing I have is just, again, it kind of dovetails back into what we were discussing earlier about borrowing costs. You know, if you look at kind of our last reval in 2017, certainly in 2021, you could borrow pretty easily. There was a ton of liquidity. For 2022, I think the average mortgage rate, you know, was 535. I would say that it got progressively worse throughout the year as opposed to better significantly. So just curious how you kind of work in, you know, the capital markets. The latest Redfin report on 2022 suggested there was over $2.5 trillion of value lost in residential. So just how do, how do I reconcile that as a, as someone who owns a home in Simsbury?
I mean, for us, again, I, I understand what you're saying. But we, the state only allows us to use those sales as our guidelines, if you would.
Yeah.
And obviously, everything you mentioned will be then reflected in those sales, what, you know, people are going to be willing to pay for and what they can borrow for.
Going forward.
Right, yeah. So unfortunately, yeah, we, we are, we can only go by what the sales say, not necessarily, but what the market potentially could do.
So follow-up question. Did you see more sales in the first half of the year versus the second half of the year?
I'd say they were pretty steady overall. I think, I think as you got towards the, the back half of it, they started to slow down a little bit as far as number of sales, but values maintained. And that's kind of what we're seeing, you know, market wise. The, the sales are slowing down, but the values are still maintaining.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more question. Did you see any geographical areas where there were differences? Like one area of towns saw greater growth than others?
If we did, again, they'd be represented in the sales. Because think about it this way, what's the number one in, in real estate is location. So if someone's paying more to live in a certain area, it's going to be reflected in the sales and we would capture it at that point.
So a higher percentage might be reflected in the...
This is an iron lary, yes.
I believe this spreadsheet that we provided, we did it by design, but it could be sorted by, you know, neighborhood or what have you.
That's something we're likely to have, you know, it would be at a cost, though. Have our mapping company through an extract, you know, and then show it on a, at a cost. I'd have to ask what the, the fee would be.
It might be worth getting that because I know we had some savings in your department. Anyone else have any other questions at this point? All right, I do have some questions after you guys leave for Francine, some of the slides, but that's it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Schools canceled, I'm assuming that's why we didn't have a call.
Our first snowstorm. Watch these cables.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, have a safe trip.
Thank you for coming in.
Want your feet here?
You guys all set to leave?
I think she's going to send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Francine, the first question is, can we please get a copy of the answers to the questions that they sent you?
Yes, we can probably pass, pass that along, yeah?
You could just send them to...
You can email us.
Please, yeah, thanks.
You know how to get out or do you want, all right? I'll be right back.
Do you want to pull up the other slide on the two slides you had up there?
Oh, sure. Well, the HDMI cord doesn't want me to, but...
Why don't you walk us through the, what that means, how that's different from what we saw on the tri board?
So this is the finalized grant list, us at 5 o'clock today, literally. So we're about 26.9... So we're about 26.95% increase in grand lists, about 22.4 million in new revenue. And then I have the breakout of the real estate versus the personal property versus the motor vehicle. And then without the revaluation, this is based on the preliminary numbers, which were actually super close to the finalized numbers, the 2.34% actual growth, which is approximately 2.3 million in additional revenue.
Between this and what we saw on tri board, what's the difference in growth? When did that end up being?
I don't know. I don't have, oh, wait. Was the tri board the most recent? No, we had sent an update a few weeks ago. So the update a few weeks ago that you received, it was a slight.
The BERT update?
The BERT update. It was a slight increase, like less than point, maybe 0.05% or something like that. I was super close.
Okay, so nothing significantly changed from the tri board? It did not, is it fair to say it did not come roaring in?
It did not come roaring in. Her estimates were pretty, pretty accurate.
Amy, one of the main categories of personal property.
That's a really good question that I do not know the answer to.
Francine, it's Francine.
I think she just went to go show them out. She's back.
Are boats considered a motor vehicle?
I don't think so. No, I don't think so.
I understand real estate, motor vehicle. Francine, do you know what the major categories of personal property are?
The major categories?
Like machinery and furniture, fixtures.
It would be machinery, well, machinery, but that gets exempted. Code 13 gets exempted. So the major category is code 16, furniture fixtures and equipment. Majority gets thrown in there.
Add personal property on this slide?
What's included in personal property?
Oh, well, personal property is all business personal property. It's not motor vehicles. Is that what you're asking? So what it is is.
I know what real estate is and I know motor vehicles, but I don't know what category is going to be.
Okay, so personal property is a business, all businesses that are operating, whether they're a home-based or they have a, you know, mom and pop shop or whatever, they have to file a business personal property every year declaring all equipment.
Does patent equipment?
Yes.
Is it inventory as well?
No, not inventory, no. So that needs to be filed every year.
What about motor vehicles? For businesses inside personal property or outside?
It's not. It's because it's registered. You don't want to double tax them. However, that's, that's probably going to change, not double taxing, but they're probably going to become, be part of business personal property. They're still working on that. But that might switch, that might change.
It's not personal property, it's business property.
It's called personal property, but it's business personal property, yes. Yes, no, your, your office, your business, you know, your, your personal furniture at home is not taxable. But if you have a business and it's home-based and it was purchased for the business and it's being used for that purpose, not for your own personal, you would have to declare it. So why they call it personal, it's personal to the business.
Francine, how do you verify that? How do you know what that is? Do you go and, I mean, is it self-reported? Do we?
It's self-reported. They have to file every year. We do, we can do audits and we do, and we'll start doing that again. That's the only way that we can really verify.
How many audits did you do last year?
We didn't do any last year because of the revaluation. There was no time to do any.
How many do you do in a typical year, would you say?
Well, I started the year before that and doing some. So we'll, it depends on the budget, depends on the size of the business because there's a cost to each one depending on the size. So we'll take a look and find out and based on the budget that I can allow, we'll figure out how many we can do.
Would you say you do 1% a year or 10% a year?
Again, I just started a couple of years ago to do a few. We had started.
I mean, it's such an inconsequential amount compared to real, to real estate that even if it went up 10%, it doesn't matter.
But yes, we will start doing some more.
Francine, would you like to talk about what trends you saw, what observations, what
struck you as interesting during this? What surprised you?
Lot of work.
Well, one of the trends you had said you had observed in November was that the lower-income homes were probably going to rise a smaller amount. It turned out actually they rose about 30%. So what sort of, what's the narrative there?
I want to ask again a different.
So when we had initially talked with Amy, maybe it was just we got, misheard something. We had thought the lower-income homes, so in the 200 range, we're going to see home values increase around 18% to 20%. And the median increase would be about 30% and the high ends 35% to 40%. But they came in and said the lower ends were, look, that was not the case. They're actually going to see a little bit higher than the median.
Well, not, no. And I'm going to take a look at that now that I have my final, final numbers and adjustments that were made. I'll be able to do another extract and take a look at that and get a better idea because, but it ends up being, value-wise, yes, if you're looking at 20%, 30%. Yeah, I'd like to do another extract and get you.
Based on prior data?
Yes, I think would be, would be better.
Could we have that by the first meeting in March, do you think, or the second? When is that realistic to get?
When's your first meeting in March?
The 7th.
Give me a listing of items that you'd like to see and I'll put stuff together.
So when we say there's 2.3 million in new economic development, sort of, sort of the normalized rate of the grand list without revow. That, I think a few years ago, we were projecting that at 900,000. What would you say capped? What is the reason we have 2.3 million? Can you talk about where that came from?
Well, there's a lot of, a lot of discovery. That does include new construction too in there, okay? And again, I'd have to do another breakdown to figure out, extract like new construction out of there because that's not going to have, that will have what we discovered, you know, that wasn't, of course, the revow company discovered things when they did their own work.
But that includes some of what you discovered?
But because, yeah, because I would have had to put it into that database too. But like what Frank was working on, the fieldwork that he was doing, he was only putting it in on that side, then I would have to put it on the revow side.
Okay, on our side.
On our side.
In your systems.
Yes, because we wanted to still keep track, you know, of this side here. So that's how we're able to see what, and do a comparison from like last year, not looking at the market, okay? So again, I can do another analysis there.
So when you had come to us in May, you said 3 million capture. Can you talk about that and where, where that is in these numbers?
Where that is in those numbers?
You can just speak generally. I just, I see 2.3, I'm not seeing 3 million. I just don't understand it, that's all.
I don't think that would be in these numbers. That would be in the fiscal year '23 numbers. Because we adjusted our grand list for fiscal year '23 based on that position coming on board, the property appraisal position. So that 3 million, if we.
Oh, I see.
If she didn't hit that 3 million, we're not going to hit our revenue budget this year. But she hit the 3 million, so our revenue budget is fine.
So it's already been absorbed into the current budget?
Right.
And that carries forward every year?
Right.
Without that, it would be a lower grand list.
Exactly.
Okay.
I mean, there's some questions, to be honest with you, that you guys asked, but I'm not sure, you know, how to answer them or if I'm understanding them adequately.
So I think the main thing we're trying to get to is taxes are going up for a lot of people in town, we think. And the question is, how do we explain that to them? Is it because of the revow? Because their homes went up others? Or is it because we didn't, we're spending more or we didn't generate enough new revenue? And that's what we're trying to articulate. And all our questions are sort of funneling into that.
And when you say you think that a lot of them, their taxes are going up, that's based on your estimated mill rate, current mill rate that you're coming up with?
Yes.
It's based on what we expect to be spending next year.
So again, maybe when we take a look at, when I take a look at that new extract on the, from the revow side and percentage-wise, you know, I could probably, you know, pull the medians out again, you know, the final ones and get a better idea.
But if I, if I'm hearing you correctly, right, we, we had a backlog on building permits to.
We still do. We still do.
Which we largely cleared for 2023 and generated $3 million in additional revenue for 2023. And all that value, to the extent it still exists, is captured in the total grand list number for 2024. And over and above that, we have at least $2.3 million, 2.34% of new growth. Can we expect any additional new growth from that process that we initiated last year of eliminating the backlog?
Do you think that Frank is going to find additional new growth in the coming years?
Oh, yes. It's, it's an ongoing project.
Well, do you have any idea?
That's why I finalize this at the very darn last minute because we keep finding things. So I'd have to put blinders on and I don't want to do that, but.
I don't want to make you busy, but.
But no, I mean, we're, we're constantly finding stuff, I mean, and trying to clean up this permit system. Again, it's not perfected yet. We're still working on trying to get that to work properly, but we do have a lot of data. This grand list will grow a little bit more from the prorated assessments from the new construction that will get added on, okay? I don't know what that total is at this point.
When will that happen?
It happens once a certificate of occupancy has been issued and then I have to add on. So there's been some certificates of occupancy issued since October 1st, but I couldn't add them on yet because we were in a revow year. Typically, we kind of like roll that in, I do the prorated assessment, we kind of like roll that in. But in with the revow, we just couldn't really do that. So that'll get added in. And then that gets added in through, you know, just before the tax bills go out. So there's, there's still a lot of construction going on, so we still have a lot of that. And then there's, you know, any new discovery that we find out that should have been added on, if we find through the board assessment appeals and all that, that will get adjusted also.
So to return to Lisa's point, what we're looking at this year, based on what we've heard from the board, other boards, is that the fixed costs of running the town are going to increase significantly this year. So we're going to be spending a lot more money and we have to know where it's coming from. And to the extent that there's more new growth, that, that makes it easier to pay our bills without raising taxes by a drachmian amount. And that's why we're just looking for any, any straw you can let us grasp about how much new revenue there will be.
Yeah, and I can't say what that is. I mean, it's.
So right now, essentially, it's the 2.3 million.
Right.
And do you think there might be some between now and when we set the mill rate that, when we set the mill rate, can make the mill rate better? Is that what I heard you say?
Do you think you're going to have anything between now and May added to this grand list?
Yes, the prorated assessments, you know, I'll have those, those done as soon as I can get back in the system, I can, any certificates that have already been issued, you know, I'll be doing those. I have no idea at this point in time what, you know, how much that will add, but, you know, we'll get that in.
So 2.34 could increase? 2.34% could increase?
It's a good increase.
I said it could increase.
Oh, I thought it was a good, without the.
It is a good increase, yeah.
You're saying it could increase before we can set the mill rate?
Yes.
In May?
Well, I mean, well, but, but that's all then, you know, when I do my, look at my little crystal ball and give you guys an estimate, I mean, I've already kind of estimated something in there, you know, when I give you that table, you know, how much more is going to be added in. So there's already an estimate in there, but if you want an actual number, you know, I'll.
Should we run with 2.34% as final or not?
My guess is that it's not going to move up to 2.5% or.
Right, especially if her estimate's already in there.
Yeah, or, sorry. Yeah, because like Francine said, she's already estimated some level of proration in from now until.
Well, that's without the revow.
Right.
The 2.34.
Yeah.
I mean, we're looking at.
Francine, you referenced issues with the integration between your platform and permitting platform. Is, is that actively being worked on or are those problems going to continue? Is there a time horizon for when they're going to be resolved?
Yeah, I'm going to get back into it now that this is pretty much all finalized. Spend a little bit more time. I have to show them what the issues are so they can know what to look for.
Gotcha.
And that's the.
I think this was before you were on the board. We had a different system on the building side for their permitting software, which did not talk to her software. And now they do talk. And now she's just working out the kinks of.
Yeah, exactly.
That integration.
Right.
Francine, during this process and to you as well, was there anything you were missing? Did you go, oh, my gosh, if I had had this?
Yes. If this office had been properly staffed for the past, you know, that's, that's the key thing. If the assessor's office can stay properly staffed and like they, they actually touched on a part of that, meaning that, was it Ridgefield that they mentioned where they were, you know, pretty much their data was nice and clean.
The numbers went down instead of up.
Right? So we're constantly finding stuff. I mean, like I said, this, it's been understaffed for a long time. If you can keep the assessor's office properly staffed and we can keep up with the workload and stay on top and keep our data clean and accurate, then you're only hiring a revow company to do your statistical part. That's it. You're not asking them to try to clean up your data. You don't want that. You want to be able to stay on top of it and keep your, you know, find what needs to be found because there's always going to be things that are going to go a little astray with the revow company. It's best if you.
Do you feel that you're still understaffed today?
We could probably do a little bit more, get, you know, but we're going to be talking about that.
You can talk about it to us as well.
So.
Well, how long has Frank been? How long?
Since September.
Yes, I mean, there's still ramp up. I mean, in order to truly assess your situation, I think we would have to know, you know, I'm assuming it's a pretty steep, you know, you're, you're getting up to speed very quickly, but until we have like two full 100% efficient or 95%.
I mean, Frank has already talked to what he's been discovering so far and it's.
Yeah, my point.
Every day.
How do you find it?
I use, I love that sketch check that we have. I start with there.
So they.
I already know what to look for when I go on the field. So, I mean, I can have a good idea of what I find before I even go up to the field. And I just have to verify it's correct.
I mean, he starts with, he's keeping, and he's also keeping, by having him as an extra body, he's on a daily basis looking at the MLS, what came on, taking a look, comparing to what we have, you know? Is that data what they have or they're listing that property as, you know, are we missing items? There's always things that change that we don't get notified on. So that's one way. And then the other way is trying to keep up with the permits, you know? And then the other way is trying to keep up with the permits, you know, new permits going in, keeping, you know, up on that. Okay, well, in, you know, a couple of months, you know, we'll go back and check on that again. Permits that are being closed, you know, follow up on that as well. And then the sketch check that he's mentioning, what the reval company did is items that came up red, they looked at. There's other colors in there too. Like, oh, you might want to check this one here or you might want to, you know? So that's what Frank's going to be working on or has been checking. You know, as he's looking at properties and we're going to go through a whole sweep of properties that we didn't really touch. Do a nice cleanup and, and check and use that. And if we could do that, you know, once every two years, this burial thing. There's, there's so much technology out there that would help, that helps.
So one of the things you were out of the room, but our priority, the assessor performance audit will be in the 2024 audit.
Yeah.
As a priority to help you assess what information technology staffing you need. We do see the value in what you do and understand that what you capture benefits every department in the town and therefore benefits all citizens in Sinsbury. So we do take that very seriously. I know, I shared with Amy, Linda had put together a performance audit to make your life easier, where she pulled some things from, that we'd all looked at, that we'd share from you, what other towns have done. So I'm sure Amy will get that to you. But anything we can do to support you in that? Very grateful for all your work. Thank everyone. To you, welcome aboard, they're very happy to have you.
Thanks.
So if we could get the information emailed to us. When you file with the state, is there a report you file or do you just?
Yes.
Can we get a copy of that, please?
The report that will be filed with the state?
Yeah.
All right. Sure.
Thank you.
I mean, we're still, you know, they're still gathering data that they're going to have to, because the reval company is a portion of that, that they have to file with the state too.
You, you mentioned that you've already filed it though, have you? Is it done?
What I did is I signed my grand list. But now from now, there's reporting, more, there's reporting to do.
It's quite a process.
Yeah.
Well, when you have it, if we could get a copy of it, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
All right. Is there anything else you can add? All right, well, thank you guys very much. And now we'll move on to a very exciting audit. And then we'll do some budget modeling with some of the new numbers that we got today. And as we adjust them, Francine, if he, if their numbers, if your numbers come out different than theirs or percentages for the different value towns, you'll let us know.
All right, well, Amy will be in touch with me.
Okay, great. So first of all, welcome. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Nicoletta, do you want to share your screen or do you want me to run the presentation? Okay.
Yep.
A little hard time hearing you.
Can you try your volume?
Hello, I'm not talking here because I'm trying to get a loud voice here. Can you hear me now?
Better.
Okay, so. I'm not sure which screen you see, the one that has one beside and a hole on or the one that has that one slide that would be, and I'm not pronouncing words.
I can hear, but I don't understand.
We are not getting a clear audio from you yet.
Do you have a better microphone, Nicoletta?
I, I can hear you okay, so you say that you can hear me?
Yeah, you're, you're kind of soft.
I'll try to be as loud as possible, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. Yeah, I'll try to be loud. And I think there's a lot in these agendas of, I'll try to summarize the reported results as efficiently as possible. So in my presentation, I have agendas to go over the terms of management, executive summary, financial highlights, state federal people audit, required governance communication, management letter, and the upcoming gap announcement for the three upcoming three. So we were engaged to express opinion on whether basic financial statements of the rest in accordance with GAAP. Expressing opinions related to basic financial statement opinions on the state of expenditures of federal warrants, state of expenditures of state financial systems, and express opinions on compliance related to major state of federal programs. In addition, we were engaged to report how you control over financial reporting and control over compliance of the major federal state programs that we have. The, if I was to express this summary goes, the reports that we, we have not issued the final report as we see here is changing package, if it was draft format. I do not anticipate major changes to those numbers, but if there are, I will let everybody know and then share the changes that might happen during the report. And the changes will be as a result of our technical review, review process that all our reports have to go through before they are issued. So far, we are going to issue unmodified opinion on the basic financial statements, which is present with opinion available. Including the opinion report, there is an emphasis on narrative paragraph that has to do with GAAP 87 missions. So the town implemented GAAP 87 as required. And as a result of GAAP 87, this is available as a different resource related to what this is being reported for any.
Uh, Nicoletta, just one second. Nicoletta, we're not.
Hold on one second.
Hearing you or seeing you well. Is this work continuing at this point, guys, or should we reschedule?
I'm, I'm inclined to, and nobody's getting any benefit out of this right now.
Okay. Nicoletta, we are, we do not have a good enough connection. I think we may need to reschedule this because we are not seeing you and the audio is not clear.
For the benefit of the people watching online as well.
And the public, they're not going to be able to hear what's going on. We may need to reschedule. Why don't we move on? If you can get your system up, we could do that later.
So you want me to turn out?
Nicoletta, we're going to reschedule. We have technical difficulties on this side and we cannot see your presentation.
And are having difficulty hearing you as well.
Do you want the, so put the presentation off on your end and then I can just hear you off?
No, it's an issue with the projector. Our cable's not working and it keeps flickering on and off.
Okay. The connection might be on your end because I can't hear you on here.
It is on our end. It is.
Okay.
So we apologize, Nicoletta. We'll work with Amy to reschedule that. Probably have to be in, it's going to be a long March meeting.
Well, it would be, and just my preference, I'm not speaking for the board, but it could be in person. I think that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, she's typically in person, just because of the snow.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, Nicoletta, I'll touch base with you tomorrow. Sorry about that.
Bye.
Bye.
Corner please. Amy, before you get started, we just had a quick, a few quick follow-ups. From the last time, there were three projects that we had that were showing no expenditure for three years. They were the 20 fiscal year 20 radio feasibility study for $35,000, the 2020 asphalt trailer for $37,000, and the sanitary sewer lining for $100,000. Are those?
So those are all going to go back into, be closed out at the end of the year. They are not going to spend that money. The radio feasibility, when they conducted that project, they no longer needed it. The asphalt trailer, Tom Roy's priority changed. He didn't feel like he needed that. And so we're going to close those out at the end of the year.
And the perennial EDC purchase, where, where is that? Where are we going with that?
So we are going to wait until the third quarter on that and do a recommended transfer during the Board of Selectment meeting. We just want to make sure that we have solid estimates as to where we're going to land at year end before we make a transfer request.
From existing, from existing appropriation.
Right.
Okay. All right, so then why don't you begin? And first of all, thank you for your work on this. We're always grateful for the effort. Know how much work goes into doing these.
So on the revenue side, quickly, you'll see that the projected year end, we're expected to be favorable of about 1.1 million. The majority of this, as you know, each year is typically due to our conservative collection assumption rate. There's about $550,000 related to that.
Amy, where is it showing the 101?
What page number?
Oh, I'm sorry, page 201.
201.
General fund.
Thank you.
And where does, I, I dare I ask to see if we can get that up?
I mean, we can try.
Because when we do the budget modeling, we are going to need to.
Maybe we ought to save the effort for that. I'm willing to do a paper.
Oh, I see, the 101 is the bottom number on the right?
Yes.
Okay.
So at the top.
There we go.
And what are we looking at the bottom? That's the revenue is going to be up a million?
Yes.
And 550 from the tax collection assumption rate?
Right, so the first line on the tax department is showing a $550,000 favorable due to the conservative collection rate assumption. And then the other major part of that, if you look one, two, three, four lines down under the town manager's office, you'll see that it's, it's expected to be favorable about $551,000. One typo in here, which Lisa caught earlier, it says pilot payment. This was actually municipal revenue sharing payment that came in this year. They had just entitled it wrong in the email. We received a payment of about $651,000 for the municipal revenue sharing, which is nothing like we've ever received before. I actually thought it was an error and we contacted the state to make sure it was accurate and it was accurate.
Do we know for what?
He didn't say, and I'm honestly not even sure if we asked. I just confirmed it was true.
Is it related to the motor vehicle? Do you know?
No.
No. So this is just an extra, they just gave it to us?
Yeah.
It was just a gift?
I guess so. We will take it.
I think it's important for the public to know it's a big number, but if it were a pilot, we would be able to budget for it. Now that it's a municipal revenue sharing.
Right, so we don't budget for it and it's not part of the governor's budget, so it's not guaranteed.
So that's too bad.
Yeah.
I thought that was an extra 600 that we were going to.
That'd be nice.
Offset with, okay.
Yeah. So that's the majority on the general fund revenues. If you go on to page 203, all the way at the bottom, you'll see the projected is about 115 million, a surplus of about $682,000 on the expenditure side.
I'm sorry, where are you on?
Page 203?
Yeah.
All the way at the bottom, all the way to the right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. You will see that there are a few things here for our police department. They're anticipating some savings of about $100,000 combined to all of their departments. The police, the dispatch, animal control, due to staffing vacancies. We have the assessor's office, we are anticipating about $33,000 in contractual services. As Francine mentioned, she does have personal property audits going on throughout the year. That's my estimate. She'll have to double check that if she does plan on doing those now that her reval and her grand list is complete. So there might be some updates to that in the third quarter. The other area of note is the highway department. Probably no surprise due to the lack of snow during the winter season. We were anticipating seeing savings there related to the seasonal help and the overtime.
Amy, can you speak to the, you know, Memorial Hall?
You know. Oh, yep. So the Eno Memorial Hall, so when I was putting my financials together, I had noted that this department was over budget. The director didn't think that that was the case. So he is taking the time to review that budget to ensure that everything is coded appropriately. I think he's already found a couple of things that have to be coded or reallocated to a different line item. So that should take care of the variance, but we'll confirm before the next quarterly and take care of any transfers that need to happen.
And same as well for town offices, which is showing over budget?
Um, yeah, so the town offices, I'm sure he'll ensure that he doesn't go over budget considering where we're at, but those are my projections that were shared with him. If he keeps on trend. And then under the employee benefits.
Oops, before we turn the page to that, can we finish on this page with the health department?
Before, before we get there, in terms of highway department, so not only was, we, our shed is full of salt right now and presuming that our blades are in just as good as, you know, in good condition as they were at the beginning of the year, does that mean anything for, do we look at that when we kind of project the capital?
So, I don't know about, so that's a good question. With climate change, do we need 13 trucks?
I didn't suggest that it was due to that, but what I, I just know that this year in particular, you know, there should be savings on.
They do do five-year averaging in terms of like salt, like how much they've used. And they do five, and they used to do five-year averaging. I don't know if Tom still does five-year averaging. So if one year is down, it does lower the overall five-year estimate, but not so much that.
Right, because next year could go twice as bad.
But he does look at, in the past, it was a five-year average, so.
That makes sense.
So in some ways it does. But in terms of capital, you know, I don't know. That's a good question. Could they do, I mean, I loathe to, this is the one, don't cut the plow truck from the operating budget. But could there be a year where there's one year, okay, we don't need a plow truck. We're going to spend 180 and keep it in there and.
Yeah, push it out a year.
So I don't know. But that's something to ask Tom, I think it's a good question.
That's all I had on time.
Yeah. Health department?
Health department. So I have to look at this one. I'm anticipating based on trend that it's 8,000 over, but right now we're not over. And I'm not sure. I'm not sure where I got that extra 292. So I will look at that one and see if I can trace back where I thought they were going to be over.
One of the things we, it seemed like minor things, but there is a law out there that no expenditure without an appropriation. And the penalty is actually fairly significant because the legislature thought it was really important. And it's one of our jobs to monitor that, make sure that, as I think Berg has always said, we're happy to work with you on it, but we do need to fix anytime we see that or if there's a red flag, so that we can get the appropriation before the expenditure is the way the law is supposed to work. So it seems picky uni. It's actually in, in the state statutes and it's one of our charter duties. Okay.
Anything else on page 202?
No.
Okay. So then on page 203, the big one here is the employee benefits, the $214,000 savings. We had our pension annual, annual required contribution payment that came in under budget, which keep the savings in mind because when we get to the Sinsbury Farms, I will show you an offset there. It's not a true $214,000 savings.
Amy, one of the things we had talked about flagging going forward is our actuary has said that anytime you capture savings below budget, you should put that immediately towards the pension as an extra payment because it helps reduce the overall thing. So when we get to year end close, I asked Amy to flag that instead of like putting that in capital reserve to put that towards the pension. But we'll talk about the offset, what happens in the cultural parks and rec as well.
So on page 204, the Culture Parks and Rec Fund.
Oh, Amy, I'm sorry, you've got contingency reserve is showing favorable. What is that? Contingency, oh, that's the vacancy, what is that?
The contingency is the unsettled contracts and then the contingency vacancy is the vacancy rate.
So what we're projecting. So, but we're projecting favorable on the contingency contracts there?
So, we always show that as a zero, it's always shown as a savings during the year because the activity actually happens in the salary line items, so technically, there's an overage in the line items and then an underage here, which offsets it. So, we don't, if a contract is negotiated and settled, say for unaffiliated my salary, you're going to see it up in the finance as a deficit, and then down here, you'll see it as an offset, my salary would not be posted to the contingency line.
So, this is sort of a neutral, only plug it salaries.
Exactly.
And just for the fund balance, to confirm for the record, there are no assignments in the fund balance or committed funds?
Correct. Onto page 204 for the Simsbury Farms, a similar trend to what we saw last year, if you look at the first line for the special programs, anticipating a favorable result of about $150,000. These are the additional programs that they started running last year, they're running into this year, has been very favorable. And then the other line item is the golf course fees, that's attributing to the favorable overall results, about $97,000, and our golf trends are actually ahead of the same time last year, so this year, they're about 710,000, the same time last year is 637,000, so my projections anticipate about $100,000 overage, which would be consistent with the end of the prior year and the last year. And then down on the expenditures, you'll see three line items, all in an unfavorable position, so this is the ARC payment. So, one of the things that we were able to ask our actuaries for this year is a breakdown of our water pollution control fund and our Parks and Recreation Fund. What we would typically do is take our pension contribution overall, we would take a percentage of it, allocate it to the Simsbury Farms Fund, allocate another percent to the water pollution control fund, but our actuaries this year were actually able to take out those employees that are specifically in the WPCA and specifically in the Parks and Rec and calculate their contributions based on the fund instead of just a percentage allocation that we were doing. So, that's why I said that $214,000 savings has actually eaten somewhat in the Simsbury Farms Fund since those were under budgeted, based on methodology we used to use.
So, the thinking there is these funds are funded by fees, and those who use it should pay those fees?
Right.
That's how the allocation works there, so. We try to do it fairly, and you view that as, and they are actually, we view this as the most fair way to do that, is that right?
Yeah, it's actually by employee.
But still, overall net favorable for the fund?
Correct.
By $60,000.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, the one thing I had mentioned to you on the phone, Amy, the transfer from the general fund, it's really a transfer of 150 from the general fund.
Yes.
And 30,000 from capital reserve.
Yep, so we need to add a line, or I need to add a line to update that, the general fund was the 151,715, and then there was $30,000 that came from the capital reserve to fund the 181.
And it's showing in terms of the fund balances, 726 unassigned, which is as a percent of the overall budget, what is that?
Offhand.
Almost 20-something? Yeah, from the bottom.
218037, yeah, about 30%?
So, that's a little high?
Mm-hmm.
So, we, that's when we think about what buckets are available during the budget process. And one of the things we had asked Amy to do over the summer is come up with a fund balance policy, is 30%, and this is probably too much.
Yes, and just to sneak peek into the Town Manager's Budget, we will be proposing utilizing some of that for fiscal year '24.
For our capital?
So, you're just looking at the surplus as a percentage of fund balance?
Yes.
Yeah, that is a big number.
Yep. And then, the next fund on page 205, our health insurance fund, I mean, everything's proceeding essentially in accordance with how we thought it would, our premiums are in excess a little bit, probably due to policy changes, new hires, the comings and goings, and then we had the RX reimbursement, we typically tend to budget on the, well, I should say Lockton tends to conservatively budget that number, we're typically over in that area. And then our claims, based on the most revised look that Lockton did on our claims this year, we're expected to be slightly over budget, about $300,000 for those. And then, in addition to the health savings account, which is an in and out in the funds, that's actually a zero net impact, and then the ASO and the admin fees, again, in association with the claims, anticipated to be over budget about $30,000. And then finally, some good news on our stop-loss insurance, we go out to bid every year on this, we typically budget around a 30% increase, and it did not come in that high this year, so some savings anticipated for our stop-loss. So, at the end of the year, you'll see that there's that $1.2 million anticipated deficit, and as you recall during the budget process, that was a planned deficit to utilize some of our reserves through the year, it helped out our budget last year to take a zero net increase on the Board of Education and the town side, so that was a planned use of that fund balance, so nothing out of the ordinary there, that was not, that we were not aware of.
Amy, what did the health increases during fiscal, that was our biggest increase, that has since come down, can you speak to that?
Right, so, last year, we had anticipated, or Lockton had told us about a 9% increase, if I recall correctly?
Yes.
And that is where we ended up taking a zero, this year, we're coming in around a 10% increase, so to make up for the cliff last year, and then to properly fund this year, we should be around 19%. I believe their budgets are showing about 15% increase. We are playing a little bit of a, taking a little bit of hedging our bets on the claims and the turnover, anticipating that that 4% could be okay, and there's a chance it could not be, but we're not making another cliff of 9% for next year, it would be.
Given that we're anticipating a million extra in revenue, that's a reasonable.
So, we hope.
Well, I mean, if you're wrong, you always ask what happens if you're wrong, well, we're anticipating extra revenue, so that's what happens if you're wrong.
Yeah, and that's what our reserves are for, so.
Right.
And then we have to build our reserves back up. So, at the end of fiscal year '23, anticipating reserves to be around 23%, and as I tell you every quarter, Lockton recommends 20%, 25% of expected claims for our reserves. I think that's all I have for highlights on the major funds, if you guys have any specific questions on any of the other funds?
The one question that Linda always asks, and I'll ask for her on page 214, is the fund balance in social services programs is very high, and I asked Amy to speak to sort of whether we're seeing decreased need there, or what's going on there, and how we can better help residents who are in need.
Right.
Can you speak to that?
Yep, so, this is something that we had recently talked to the Director of Social Services about, and because of COVID, there were a lot of moratoriums on rent increases, gas, electricity for certain individuals, so there had not been as much of a need. Now that those moratoriums are disappearing, they are actually seeing an increase in requests from residents to help fund either their rental income, their utilities, oil, things of that nature, so we should see an increase in that forthcoming over the next several months.
I believe they're discussing in Hartford now, caps on increases for rents, which would offset some large increases in rent that we talked about earlier here, restrictions on landlords and imposing, I'll just use the general term, large increases on people. The other thing that's related to this, I think, because you bring up COVID, is that we hired two people for, that were, to be shared, I think, between the town and the Board of Ed.
No, the town got one, and the Board of Ed got two.
Okay, so three?
Yeah.
You know, even more so that were meant to cover a lot of the increased need here, so when I see 191,000, almost $200,000 here, I would assume that a lot of, a lot of the weight of this budget would be kind of absorbed by full-time employees at the town and Board of Ed level, so how does that dovetail into?
I think this is reimbursement, the programs are used for rent reimbursements, I'm not sure that they would dovetail there.
So, this is just purely?
Money that they give to residents to help them.
Right, so this is donations that are taken in and then turned around and used mostly for food assistance, some rental assistance, prescription assistance, heating oil, things of that nature.
So, like COVID-19 here, that would be probably medical costs related to COVID-19?
No, we just track those separately, people that came in asking for assistance during COVID-19 that had not typically asked for assistance prior to COVID-19.
Gotcha, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
The other thing I forgot to mention, Derek had asked this at our last meeting, and Amy confirmed this, one of the things our board is always interested is what is, what is the balance in these funds that is available for use during the budget? And we had asked to show encumbrances and any assignments or future uses and notes there. And Amy, you know, there's like a fiscal note on TAR, but can you speak to, in general, these fund balances are now, have all been cleaned up, and they're all available for use?
Right, so, anything that should have been booked that was either part of the budget, like the town aid road, or any anticipated expenditures, if there are any small encumbrances, they've all been added into here, so everything has been accounted for that I am aware of. So, the fund balances that you see here are accurate fund balances for use as of December 31st.
How should I think about a negative fund balance?
Where are you seeing that?
I'm seeing it in the police special duty fund, I know there's another one in here as well, because when I see a negative number, it's almost, for me, it looks like this is an expectation to at least get to net zero, that there should be some funding of these special revenue funds, and I would, my assumption was, would be that it can't go any less than zero, so.
So, it can from a timing variance, so it can't, like, we can't overspend the fund, but for the police private duty, we incur the expenditures, the police go out on their jobs, and then we bill them for the amount of time, so that's just, we're just waiting for the revenue to come in.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah.
Yeah, field maintenance, recreation is another one.
Yeah, so the field maintenance, recreation, when we start getting the sports money during the spring quarter, that should go to a positive as well, but you're right, if that's still a negative at the end of the year, that's a problem.
Okay.
And for the balance in TAR, is that the balance after we receive the 367 or before?
That's the balance with the one payment that we've received, that's why I put in the note that we're anticipating to receive the second payment.
And the second payment is not 367, right, it would be half of that?
Right, so the anticipated to receive in total is the 367.
Can we get, I think I may be a little clearer on TAR itself, because that's a revenue that comes in and out, what the budget is, what's the revenues and the expenditures, do that one maybe differently than the others? Does anyone else have anything on the special revenues, or are we already done with the capital?
I'm good.
Okay. Can you get us to the right page there?
On 240.
Do you want to give us an overview there, and then we'll go into specific questions on page 240?
Do you want me to just address the Henry James one from last time, the follow-up?
Yeah, that would be great.
So, a couple of the projects on here, excuse me, I had actually spoken with Lisa earlier, and from the last meeting, the Henry James project that's showing anticipated of almost 3.9 million unspent, so if you go under the education projects, and you go one, two, three, four, five, six lines down, HJ MS renovation, phase three, although we have not spent about 3.9 million of that project, our cash balance, since we didn't have to bond for the whole thing, is approximately $2 million on that. And then I believe that there was another, the Henry James renovation.
Sorry, could you repeat what you just said?
Yep, so the 3.9 is our unspent budget.
Where is that, that's on 240?
241.
Ah.
Under education.
Explain it.
Yep. 241, education projects, and I think it's about the sixth one down.
Say that again, it's the what one down?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six.
Yep. So, over, it says the uncommitted balance is about 3.9 million, but we did not bond for that entire project, so our cash balance in that account is approximately 2 million. So, once that state audit is complete on that project, we can reallocate that $2 million in savings to other projects that are bond funded and reduce our borrowing.
Amy, could you, for the next meeting, do a fiscal note on that?
Sure.
2 million cash balance, when we have cash balances, and we're seeing that, and have they begun that audit yet, or not yet?
I believe they started it on phase two, not phase three.
Almost.
Phase one says that it needs an audit, still?
Yeah, so, that one still hasn't been picked up for an audit, I have one of our admin assistants following up with the state on that, they're seven years behind, and they just recently picked up the Henry James phase two, so we have the same question, why haven't we had our state audit for the squadron line or the phase one, so we're waiting for an answer on that from the state.
Is that statutory that we have to wait? Or can we start reallocating some of these dollars, or even portions thereof, back to our general fund?
I don't think it's statutory that we have to wait, we just take the risk that if something comes back in the audit, right.
I think that's probably, depending on the total dollar amount and the fact that they're seven years behind, I wouldn't mind taking at least some of the, some, when I say risk, calculated risk on them holding our funds hostage and actually, you know, returning some partial dollars back to our general fund.
One of the things I had asked Amy, I think that's a great point, one of the things I had asked Amy to look into, and that she's going to start looking to, is what can we do with our cash assets? I had sent Amy, Fairfield had just hired an advisor, and they increase their revenue from cash investments, and something like that, where we can't touch, we should at least be earning 4% instead of the 0.5 that we have, so that's a good way to at least generate some income while we're waiting, if we can't utilize some of it, to your point, that's worth evaluating, Derek. When we see large numbers, Amy, if you could just mention which ones are cash balances?
Can I just make sure I understand what's going on with everything?
Sure, yes.
I'm not sure I do, so it's, 3.9 million is a number based off the original budget of the project, 2 million of that is unspent, so where's the 3.9 cut off?
So, the 3.9 is just the budget, so we budgeted 23 million, we only spent, what, 19 million, so of our budget, we did not spend 3.9 million.
Why was that?
Your guess is as good as mine, project savings, but I don't know specifically associated with what, I'd have to ask the project manager. But if during the year, when we went out to bond for that project, if I knew that we were going to be under budget on that project, I wouldn't bond for the full amount, so we only have 2 million in cash. Had I bonded for the full amount, we'd have 3.9 million in cash.
I see.
For budget discussions with Jason, if he could come in prepared, just to explain that to us, why there's so much savings there?
Sure.
And the boiler replacement, you'll see that that's 70% savings, so there is an explanation for that, and I'll have Amy give that explanation.
So, this project was approved prior to the Latimer Lane project, and then there was an actual issue with the Latimer Lane boiler. Originally, we told him that he couldn't use that money since they would be tearing down the school and replacing everything anyways, but since there was a situation that arose that fit within the bond language to do work on the boiler, we did allow him to move forward with any work that would be non-duplicative. we did allow him to move forward with any work that would be non-duplicative of the Latimer Lane project. So they were able to fix the boiler, utilize that funding up to what they needed to make the repair. And then that project can be closed out as the remainder of the work will be done under the renovation project.
Quick question on the golf irrigation system. Are they able to start that earlier just given kind of, well, I guess, the snowstorm coming? No, but I'm just curious. So that's, it looks like they spent $41.
So that actually has another story to it. You will see that as part of the town manager's budget. They went out to bid for that project. We came in short, it's part of the fiscal year '24 budget request.
Okay.
How much were they?
About $300,000.
Going back to 240, can you, a couple of things for follow-up we had mentioned. 2017 Town Hall Safety has an uncommitted balance of $300,000. 2017 Land Use Studies, 2018 Facilities Master Plan and the 2018 Zoning Regulation Update. One of the things our board is always, why we've asked for in the capital project sheets is start date and completion date. And it's precisely for these reasons, because we don't understand why these are not complete. There are reasons for them and you can give us, walk us through some of them. But those are things we want to track because it doesn't make sense to budget for them and then not spend them. Do you want to walk us through them, Amy?
Sure. Um, so for the, that's completed, completed, completed. So the town hall site and safety improvements, this is one of three, I believe, projects. You'll see it going down the line, that a couple lines down, there's another one that says Town Hall Site and Safety. And I believe there is one more. If you go all the way down to the second one from the bottom of that page, 240, that one is Town Hall Site and Safety. Those are all projects that got different appropriations for different portions of the project that all have to be combined. That's why they all have the same completion date of fiscal year '23. Um, the multi-use connections, it's not anything. The land use studies, our new planning director has just been getting up to speed on what project money he has available. The land use studies, he is able to conduct some work on for work that was previously done that he was not satisfied with. So he will be utilizing that money for that. And then the zoning regulations, again, he is anticipating getting those done. He just needs to get up to speed on the project.
Yeah, we weren't that far from that being done, I guess so.
The zoning regulation? I don't know, I have to ask. I'm not sure.
Putting a hole in that thing, I thought.
Maybe, I have to ask. I can find out.
One of the things generally, we have a column that says appropriation balance, December 31st, 2022. Asked Amy to change that because that's actually the original appropriation, the total cost. Because we want to make sure we have the total cost of what was appropriated. And then Amy will add either a fiscal note or an amended budget if there's a supplemental appropriation there.
Okay.
So it's an appropriation of the balance?
Correct, it's the original appropriation.
Well, it's the original, right now it's the original appropriation plus any additions that were made in subsequent years to get to the total appropriation balance. But like Lisa just said, we'll break them out where it's the original appropriation and then any additions.
The BERM improvements, three and a quarter million, what, how, how do we think about that? Can we apply for the same grant the following year or?
Um, I'm not sure of the specifics on the grant. That'll actually be a great question for Tony and the WPCA that are coming to present at your March meeting.
Great.
But I know for this one that they were not moving forward unless the grant was approved and unfortunately it was not.
Where are you seeing the BERM thing?
Uh, page 240, top, with the 3.25 million.
Under sewer fund projects.
Not moving forward.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
So TBD.
Yes.
And driveway paving management, we've got nothing left?
Nope. No, um, so I don't know if you recall, but when we did our year-end financial results, that was actually overspent at the end of last year. So instead of doing an additional appropriation to reallocate the amount that was overspent, they just essentially paved in advance and so they're not doing any additional paving this year. They've already paved it.
So nothing happened in summer?
Right, it typically wouldn't anyways.
So there will be no further paving this year?
Right, so if they do typically, what is it, 10 miles a year? So they've already done 10 plus the allocation for this year.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So it was overspent because they paved more than?
So it was overspent in the prior year because of my error when we transitioned over. I think it was a, a minute's miscommunication, I don't remember at this point. But it was overspent last year because I told them that they had more money than what they did. And then when I recalculated, it was incorrect. So they had already spent it, so they were over and they had already done the paving. So instead of paving, say, 26 miles last year and 20 miles this year, we're just going to stick with the intended budget.
And we've got a process in place to make sure that doesn't happen again?
Right.
Is that just because of the transition in systems?
I believe so. I'd have to look offhand, but we've, we've rectified that.
Yeah, well, we'll keep it at that.
It's taken care of.
So the perpetual mobile data, data terminals that are overspent, tiny amounts.
Yeah, so this one just needs a journal entry to correct. I think I missed it from last time, but then noted, Lisa had noticed it was always overspent. So I'll have to touch base with IT or the chief to find out if we're not budgeting appropriately for those.
I'm sorry, I'm missing, where are we looking right now?
It is page 244, about the middle of the page.
Yep. Oh, the data terminals, gotcha, yeah.
And just, are we in capital now recurring? Just for members of the public, we have a new policy where Amy can authorize expenditures above what was appropriated so long as the entire fund has sufficient savings to cover it and then we'll do those transfers at the end of the year. I did ask Amy going forward to put in writing what she has authorized and to put in writing that the fund has sufficient funds to cover the overage so that we just have, keep a running record of that in our surprise at the end.
Yeah.
And that could just be the cost of those terminals?
Yeah.
Well, that's why we did the policy to give Amy some flexibility so long as the fund can support it within itself and it doesn't require us to supplement the fund.
Right.
Amy, the nonprofit grant program, can you talk about that? 244, nonprofit, I have, maybe it's not there.
244?
No, I don't have it there, I went the wrong page.
Oh, it's 242.
Okay.
So for our capital reserve, we had put aside money for the nonprofit grant program that was funded via the ARPA funding or ARPA-themed funding, I should say. That needs to be transitioned out because we actually did and currently are funding those grants that were requested. The Finance Subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen put together a listing of nonprofits that they approved for funding up to $10,000. So that money will, should be moving over. I'll have to do a journal entry to take that out of Capital Reserve and move that into the general fund where the money's being expended.
Amy, could we get a list of who was awarded those grants and where that, we could find that on the website.
Yeah, I can send you that link.
Latimer Lane is still showing an assignment, but that's because of the date of this. It was before the referendum. It's now in appropriation, so it'll be moved out of the assignments, right, Amy?
Right.
Does anyone have any other questions on CNR? Amy, is there anything in these that needs to be brought to our attention?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Members of the Board of Ed?
Yep.
Page?
Page 246.
Um, so nothing really to report outside for the Board of Education that hasn't been reported in the first quarter. The thing that we're taking a close look at currently is where we're going to stand at year-end. So our accountant put together some estimates for where she thinks that we're going to land at the end of the year. I went back to Special Services, asked some questions. We're going back and forth right now to try to finalize those numbers and then put together a plan to see if we will have sufficient savings to cover any potential deficit. So those will be, the finalized numbers will be presented during your March 7th meeting with the Board of Education, just like last year when we had the anticipated deficit.
So one of the things that's changed, and Amy's still evaluating and actually every town in Connecticut is still evaluating because OPM has given so little information, is excess costs is the money you get back from the state after you spend a certain amount on special education. We got, we used to get reimbursed, I think at 68%. They've increased since various reimbursement rates. So that will mean more money will come in. So that may take, or at least lessen the overage that we were anticipating and may lessen the fixed costs or the, the critical needs in fiscal year '24 budget. So we're trying to get that number as accurate as we can because that will be a budgetary savings both in the current year and next year.
And next year as well? I mean, presumably we're absorbing more. A, a cost associated with that, huh? I don't, I don't.
Well, that's the, that's the hard thing to budget. I mean, I don't know how many children qualify for excess costs, probably like 25 or 30, right?
Um, I don't know offhand, but it's so tricky because we could have 100 additional students in special education, which doesn't mean we're going to get any more money. They have to hit our per pupil expenditure essentially.
Four and a half times over.
Four and a half times over, exactly, before we get any sort of reimbursement. So depending on the level of needs, sometimes it's hard to anticipate whether they're going to hit that threshold or not.
And then just on food services, I know it's a small amount, but Matt Curtis came, came out with an email this week that free lunches, free breakfast, at least two meals would be free from March 1st on. So I would assume there'd be an offset to the full 88.96?
Um, so the 88.96 is just the general fund's contribution to the cafeteria fund to cover, I believe, 10% or portion, 10%, I believe, of the director's salary.
Oh, okay, yeah, so that's fixed.
Yep.
Where would I find them? Would there be a reduction in some other line item associated with that?
Um, no, we've never reported on their cafeteria fund before.
Okay.
I guess we could.
I, I'm curious what the mag, magnitude is. Probably a pretty big number.
Amy, if we could also get a summary of the excess cost and out of town tuition budget, because we budgeted the net number there, if we could get the total cost budget. Last meeting, we had also asked for total cost budgets for both the town and Board of Ed as well, just generally. For the non-lapsing fund, that's showing a balance of about 650, but some of those are assigned for future use. And I had asked Amy to break down the multi-year budget plan for that so that we can see what's available for use in the current budget and what we have already planned for. The other thing I had asked Amy, we had asked on the past LDB, on page 247, there is a chart there, but it's not the same system that we use for the town. So to make those accountings compatible to use the same accounting for both. But with the narrowness there. Does anyone have any other questions on the Board of Ed? You know what, I think we forgot to do the finance director's report.
Um, we did.
Page 196.
I think it was just an updated listing of grants, if you have any questions, and then the total appropriations through the year. What page was it, Lisa?
196. One of the things we had asked Amy to pull together so that we can make a policy call later is how many grants have been applied for that we're waiting or that we anticipate the town will apply for so that we can decide whether or not to budget for them? Are they?
I thought you wanted the grants awarded.
Grants awarded, the ones that were, we wanted both. A tally of grants awarded and grants applied for, not yet received, to know whether we should be budgeting for them. Generally, you budget for?
I, I, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I think we wanted to know when they were applied for, not every application. Because that, I mean, you've probably put some level of probability of receiving the grant, I think. But I, I always looked at it as, well, when do we apply for it? When do we get it? Why is it still here? Why haven't we spent it yet? But you, so help me, like, we want to see even ones that are going through right now, when, when they've been applied for.
Well, in terms of, to avoid supplemental appropriations, if it's a reasonable grant that we reasonably can anticipate receiving, OPM does recommend that you budget for them.
Okay.
If it's wildly dubious, then you don't. Then the question is, well, what happens if you don't get the grant? Well, then it becomes a managerial problem on Maria's side in the Board of Selectmen. Technically, they could spend it, but woe to any elected official or town manager who spends, who doesn't have the money.
But is it, is it on Amy or Maria to determine a probability of us, of receiving?
It's a policy call. I mean, we, they need to give us the resources so that we can make that evaluation. And so we do rely on them for that analysis. But at the end of the day, we have to make a call. You see Avon and Glastonbury, do you budget lotsip? We have not in the past. It's, I think it makes sense to consider doing that. So some of those, and some of them are tough calls. So I'm not going to say it's a perfect science, but some of the bigger ones, the littler ones you write for $20,000, if you didn't budget it, eh, we can do a supplemental layer. But for the lotsips, which are 1.6 million, it might make sense to do it. Sort of like the BERM, they budgeted for it, it didn't come in, so they didn't spend it. But at least if it does come in, it's ready to go and we don't have to go to referendum.
Right.
To spend it, is sort of the thinking there, so let's try and get that clear. But yes, we do rely on Maria and Amy to help us make that evaluation as to whether to budget or not.
Question on supplementals, who? Who's managing the diversity, equity and inclusion data project? Whose responsibility is that falling there?
Um, I believe the DEI Council and the staff on that, I believe it's Kristen, former Act of Social Services Director.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we have done all those. We can move on to supplemental appropriation, emergency repairs, DPW, page 249. So our, our policy, actually the law, is there's no expenditure without an appropriation, right? You just, you can't do it, never happens. We do have in our policy, though, that we permit an expenditure without an appropriation in the dire circumstances where immediate threat to life and safety, where there isn't time to hold a meeting. This was not that in this case. There was time to make a phone call to the chair and the first selectman, that didn't happen. We were notified afterwards, doesn't matter, yeah, obviously we're going to support this, it needs to be done. But we do need to follow the policy going forward and perhaps we need to clean up our policy and just make that a little tighter. Because this did happen, I'm not sure why we need a supplemental appropriation when we're anticipating so much savings at year-end. We can do that with a transfer. Transfers within the Department of Public Works, we was anticipating, we just saw 100,000 in savings in overtime, although a little less after tonight. They should be able to find savings within their budget to pay for that. So my recommendation is we just ask them, go back and find savings. You can do a transfer within your department, that's social cars, Board of Selectmen approval. It doesn't even need to come to us. And if you can't do that, come to us, but find savings somewhere else in your budget. We know there's savings in employee benefits, you could do it from there. We don't need to charge the taxpayers more money than what they approved. We can do it with savings that already exist, that's why. We don't need to charge the taxpayers more money than what they approved. You can do it with savings that already exist. That's what transfers are for. So that would be my recommendation at this point, but I'll open it up to discussion on that. I did ask Amy to start looking for savings for that.
I like the, I like the idea. It's thoughtful approach. So we don't have to make a motion then if we decide to?
Nope. And then Amy, if there's a problem, you can bring it back to us, but.
What's the emergency threshold again? I remember we talked about this. It's the 10% or 5%?
Before a referendum?
20,000? No, no, for emergency.
Oh, for, for, for parks, right? In the, in the legislature, they.
No, no, Maria, like, if something happens and you need.
There's no dollar threshold.
And what's, it's a percentage then?
No, it was just, she needs to, I mean, what this is really for was when we had the October story communications were down, you couldn't call people. In this case, it's easy to pick up the phone. I could have called you and say, hey, guys, can we do an emergency meeting within 24 hours by Zoom and get her the appropriation? You always want to do the spending after you have the appropriation. And so if there's time to get the appropriation, you want to do that first.
Right, but the, but when you can't get in touch with anybody, there's leeway for the town manager to?
We did not put a threshold number on it, but we should. You're right.
I thought we, I thought there were numbers associated. A max dollar amount?
I think it was discussed at one point, but it didn't go through.
Okay.
So any amount not appropriated? Is it any amount not appropriated?
Right.
But for an emergency of life, immediate threat of life, and there wasn't. It was four days after Tom told her that they authorized it. So that was not immediate threat. So we can, I mean, the, the idea is you never want to use it. You only use it if there is a dire emergency and you can't pick up the phone and call the chair of the Board of Finance.
I understand. Yeah. I, my mind is just going towards unlimited caps. That's all.
Well, I think, I think that's a wise thing. This is, this does not, this is our policy, so we can adjust that in July. And I, to your point, I think that's a great suggestion, because we should do that.
I understand the problem is not the amount, it's the procedure.
Yeah, we just need to tighten up the procedure a little bit.
Okay.
And, you know, Maria, the thing about town managers and staff, they never have the authority to grant an appropriation, only elected boards
Yeah, right.
can do that, or the people themselves, the referendum. So it was the grant of an expenditure without an appropriation, but we can tighten up. Obviously, we're going to approve this because they needed to, or they should be able to take care of it within.
And what do you want to try to avoid? Burst pipes, if he is required to do that.
Exactly. So no one's questioning the need for it. It's just.
For sure. No, it's just going to be an automatic, if you spend money that's not appropriated, you go, you're notified.
Yeah, exactly. And I was notified after the fact, but not prior. Okay. So we'll put that on hold, and hopefully it doesn't need to come back to us and gets taken care of within the department. Then we have another appropriation for congressionally directed spending for police department IT needs and to create a C N R project. We did have actually public audience. Nobody was here, so we didn't do it. But anytime we have a supplemental appropriation, we'd like to offer public audience in case people don't want the grant, even though it is free in terms of property taxes. Can you talk to us, Amy, what this is and what it's for?
Yep, so this is something that was applied for. Actually, I don't know if you recall, but I believe Blumenthal actually came out quite a while ago now, oh, back in May of 2021, around that timeframe, where we had applied for the money we were anticipated to get it. But unfortunately, we hadn't received official notification. It's for IT needs. The chief had put together a proposal to use it for mobile connectivity, security camera upgrades, additional dash cameras. So the funding actually did finally come through for the $70,000, and now we just need the permission to spend it.
And there's no match associated with that, am I correct?
Right.
Do you know what the crime prevention and investigative technology is?
I do not.
Has this been recommended by the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, at their February 15th meeting.
Does anyone have any further questions? I'll ask for a motion effective February 27, 2023, to appropriate funds received from congressionally directed spending worth less than the amount of 70,000 for technology upgrades for the Simsbury Police Department. Further move to create a C N R project for the police IT needs and to appropriate the funds received towards the project.
So move second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So in our next quarterly, we'll see a new project in the C N R for that. Okay, great. Then for the annual report, very excited that there's a glossary this year, so thank you for that. We had asked that it include a list of all elected and appointed officials as a thank you for their works, efforts, and hundreds of hours they put in that. Glastonbury does that, so before this goes out, we would ask that that be added as well. Going forward, I talked to Amy about this. It would be nice to see added, and what requests that it be added for next year is performance indicators or activity indicators. In the back of our capital comprehensive, no, in the back of the audit, there are different things. We have this many roads, and we do this many roads here, and we do this many this. People should know what their money is going to. And if we could just get some of those basics, it doesn't have to be more than what is in the audit report, but those are already there. They should be in the annual report as well. Does anyone have any other questions? Changes they wanted to make on that. Oh, no, that, it's actually for the 2021, 2022 year. It's a year of late, yeah. So it goes backwards. And it's not late. That's just the timing of them.
Mike Long was credited for this picture, but that's not of the McLean campus. It's a shot. I can't remember which hole is at the farms, but.
Yeah, we did actually get some comment about why we're putting a picture of a non-town asset on the front. But it's a beautiful picture, so thanks to Mike.
Oh, 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 it was taken from McLean of Hot Meadow.
Yes.
From the, I see. I'm like, where's the building? It's not a picture of the building. It's from the building.
Yes.
Roger that. It is a, yes. So that's Hot Meadow.
Yeah, I was questioning that as well.
Yeah, so it's a little weird to put a private golf course.
Mike likes his view.
Where you can't play unless you pay, but, but that's a.
I think people just assume it's the farms.
I did.
We're going to go with that. We thought it was the farms. Yeah, so it's a little, it's a, it's a, I'm not going to say, it's a little, I, it's a beautiful picture, but kind of a strange choice to put it's the face of Simsbury, but.
We can have a better next year.
Right. I don't know. I don't know what that's about. It's, I think Art said, not worth spending our time on that one. We've got a budget coming for it. But thanks to Mike, because it is truly a beautiful picture. I will, I will say that. Okay, now we are on to the budget discussion, discussion. So Amy, if you could pull up my mill rate modeling.
Trying.
Mike, can you?
At a time port, either the port on that laptop breaks or the cable.
I know. I think it gave up.
It may have. Is that specific? Unnatural angle.
Yeah, it's not having that. I think we killed it during the first half.
Maybe the Board of Selectmen is through. We can use their cable.
Oh, are they done? Can we have the Board of Selectmen's done?
I don't know if it's the cable, right?
I think it might be at this point, just because it's the only thing that's not.
Just hoping to see a different cable laying around. We're not seeing anything.
No.
I don't really want to go through Jason's gear without Jason's.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's not doing anything.
My guess is that they're still on, otherwise you'd be back up here, or, I don't know.
You go check the room, because the room's right over here.
Yeah, I didn't see it. It's up here.
You just go in the next room.
It's dead.
Yeah, there's still reading.
Yeah.
So Amy, why don't you walk us through verbally? We have 2.3 million in new revenue, no new non-tax revenue, right?
Yes, so I can give you essentially what's being. One second, just to copy. There you go. All right, nobody breathe.
Don't move, don't move.
Don't move. Uh, who knows?
Oh, no.
Aw, man. So essentially, the town operating budget is about 31,310,000. We have the school operating budget of 82,386, and then we have our debt service of 8.3 million. This is offset by anticipated revenue of 16,396. I think overall, it's about a 7% budget increase with our new rebound numbers and our 98% collection rate. It gives us an estimated mill rate of 31.02.
But that is not inclusive of?
Can I try one thing?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Fire district, which would be an initial one to.
Right, so the fire district is 32.24.
32.24?
Yes, with the fire district, yeah.
Amy, could you email that, the modeling to us right now?
Sure.
If you can look at it.
What did you do?
Nothing.
I was hoping to find a wireless option, but it's not there.
Oh, well, it's on anyways.
So that modeling I sent to you guys, where it shows the changes, if you do that, I'll just read it to you. We were showing in the 250 range, you assumed that would be a 30% increase in taxes. That's looking at additional annual change of $574.48 a month for the lowest valued homes. If you look in the 350, 450, and 550 range, that's between 25 and 30%. They said about 28%. That would be for the 350 range, an increase of taxes between 400 to 800 a year. For the 450 range, it would be increase in taxes, 526 to 1,000 a year. And for the 550 range, it would be 650 to 1.1200.
Are you, did you make changes to this since you sent it out?
Yes, I added the new, I put in the new mill rate, I mean, the mill rate that she just gave us.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, good.
And you can do that too, if you have that.
Yeah.
Type in the 32.24.
32.24, okay.
And for the higher range, you'll see that is a 2,000 to 2,900 increase in taxes. So we were hoping to get more information from the rebound company so that we could be more specific. But generally, you can sort of see what it would be. If your home value came in lower than that, you might, you might pay less. But this is still substantially large amount of money. When we think about new revenue, 2.3 million, new expenditures, close to 7 million, right, Amy?
Yes.
So that's a 5 million gap. There were no new non-tax revenues. So why is this happening? Because we are spending more, quite a bit more than we have in the past. Last year, the increase was, what was the total dollar increase, Amy, net of?
I don't have the increase. I only have last year's compared to this year's.
Part of that, well, part of, the drivers there are coming from fixed costs, but our fixed costs came down. So when we had the tri board, the fixed cost came down. Board of Education Health came down about $600, Matt says. Is that right?
600,000, yep.
600,000.
You mean they, they came down from what they were projected at the tri board?
Correct, right.
They're still substantially above what they were last year.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification, Bert. That's important.
But if you think about, like, how do we analyze what we should do? In, in an ideal world, new revenue will cover new expenditures, right?
Yeah, but in a non-reval year, your mill rate's going down. So this is perpetual.
Well, so, yeah, but if you think about exclusive of the rebound, just our new revenues are not enough to cover our new costs. So that's why we're feeling pain in the bum. Those new costs are being driven by the teacher negotiated settlement and debt service are the two biggest increases. Is that right, Amy?
Mm-hmm.
So when you start there, and then the third would be health. Is that right?
Right.
So those are, so then the question we have for us is how much above fixed costs are the budgets coming in at? And unfortunately, we can't pull this up. We were going to do this in real time. Amy, could you get that number to us so that we can see that?
Sure.
Because for me, it's, the guidance we gave the boards, this is going to be frustrating, because Matt asked me to call him, and we were going to do this analysis. And now we can't do the analysis, so it's going to be delayed until March, unfortunately. But the, the guidance we gave in the tri board, fixed cost budget, nothing else, unless it's a critical need directly related to health and safety, and even then, try and find an offset. So, Amy, where are we from where we were at the tri board? Is this, how different? It's more than where we were at the tri board, but how much more?
Um, so it is, let me see, let me pull up the tri board. So the tri board, the net expenditures were about 7.33, and we're at 7.63.
Amy, on this one, okay, so seven point, remind me, seven point what?
7.33 for net expenditures at the tri board that we did for the budget modeling, and 7.63.
So difference of.
In the final proposed. Dollar, I was doing percentage. You want dollar value difference?
Yeah.
So the dollar value difference. It's about 289,000 more.
289,000 more than where we were at the tri board, okay. So the one thing I had asked Amy to do, and I'm so disappointed we can't do that, but Amy just said the budget modeling number. So if you could pull that up and unhide, go to the levy calc. So this year, when you look at the. Amy, I'm not sure what you've done there. We had asked you to show the percent increases.
So if you unhide it.
What is the home value increase assumption you're using for these?
So we had Francine pull a new median, and she has a new median of 391,500. If you unhide Collins, G, H, and I. If you unhide columns G, H, and I, you'll have your percentages.
Yeah, but what home value increase are you presuming?
We didn't do a home value increase. She ran her revised reports based on what she was seeing and gave us a new median. So, we did the new median of 391,000.
Yes, but we want to see what the home price was for the median increase for the value and the new taxes to show the difference.
So...
Just like we did in every other modeling we use. This, because this is not realistic. You add a 350, your home increased 30%.
So, we did median to median.
That's not, that's not a realistic number.
But every other year, we've done median to median.
It wasn't a revale year. So, we need to know, remember...
But this is, is with a revale.
But, but Amy, so, we've changed, we've changed the modeling from what we've been using every other time we've looked at this. We've taken, the median home was 350. 350 median increase is 28%.
Right.
So, you add that. With the new mill rate, how much are the taxes going up, same house?
So, I can do that calculation, but we've always done median to median. So, now, we don't want to do median to median?
We would like to do it the way we had modeled it for the last seven times we've looked at the model. Yeah, we should not be changing the model at the last minute.
Well, I didn't, I just copied this one from before. And the last one that we did was the 450, the 550, and the 750. And then we did, on the fly, we did changes to 30%, 20%, 25%.
Yeah, every time you've looked at it and you've done that, so, we need to see that. Can you add that in there now?
Sure.
I'm just not sensing that everybody's getting the same benefit of this discussion without being, seeing the numbers.
It's not, it's, yeah, that's very frustrating, so we may have to do this, but...
I mean, I'd like to be a part of the discussion.
Yeah, okay.
As opposed to, you know...
All right, we'll do that later, but we're going to need that because otherwise, you're not seeing the full...
Yeah.
I, I don't, do we want to call a special meeting on Wednesday or just do this on March?
What, what is it, March 7?
That, that doesn't give the boards any guidance from us that it's...
I mean, if all you're looking for is what we did last time, if you unhide the columns, they're there, the 25%, the 30%, and 35%.
Oh, is it in the I?
It's in G, H, and I, or G and H, I should say.
Well...
I think, I think our guidance is, is pretty consistent, wouldn't you say? That above fixed cost, there is no room. Right, I mean, it's already 7%. So, we could, we can play with the numbers, but I, I don't see there being a whole lot of wiggle room.
We saw earlier in the meeting that, uh, in some cases, this is more than a $2,000 a year increase in taxes. And that's, that's really the point there. We're trying to drive home.
I agree.
Amy, what do you think the median increase in taxes is?
Um, based on what they said, it's high twenties.
Pardon?
Based on what the rebound company said, it's high twenties.
25 to 30%.
No, but I mean, like, median tax increase is going to be what? Dollars?
For a house.
I mean, if you take the median house, it's a tax decrease.
So, that doesn't make, that's why this is not making sense, Amy.
At what mill rate?
31.02.
We're going to need to look at this because it, did you look at my model that I sent?
Mm-hmm.
So, if you have a house that's 350, it increases a 28%. You've got a new mill rate.
Yeah.
The taxes increase.
Right, but yours is just based on a set, um, a set percentage increase. Whereas, mine was based on, I mean, it has the percentages, but it's based on what Francine says is the new median home.
Yeah, but for an individual home, their taxes are going to go up or down depending on their value increase, right?
Right, so that would be the 25, 30, 30, and 35% that we did before.
But it's not showing here.
If you unhide GH?
Well, maybe we should just...
Do you want me to do, do you know, I don't hide it. I can show, I can show you. Did you unhide it? Yeah, okay, okay.
So, if the home in 20, last year, was 350, it increased 28%, what is the new home value, Amy?
Then, it is 448,000.
What is their new taxes? Was it 32? No?
It is... 562 dollars.
They're only paying 562 dollars in taxes?
More.
More. So, that's not a tax decrease for them?
No, but what I'm saying is, when we had Francine look at the median, based on the median that she gave me, it's a tax decrease.
But nobody has the median, everybody's houses went up, so...
Right, so then, we're just doing what you said and just plugging in the 25%, the 30%, the 35%.
Yeah, so, my problem is, I don't want to say to the public, your taxes aren't going up, you're getting a tax decrease when everybody's taxes are going up.
But that's not true. If somebody has a 391,000 dollar house, which Francine says is the new median, their taxes are going down.
So, let's, let's do that 391,000, go backwards, what was it last year then? It's 390, it had a 28% increase. Last year, it was what?
So, last year, we did the median at 350, and then this year, she's saying it's 391.
Okay, so, let's take the 350 house, the 350 house, we know from the rebound that it went up 28%. At 350, what did they pay in taxes?
9,165.
Medium home value, same house, went up 28%, what's the new value?
So, that's increasing it by a percentage, but Francine's saying that there's a new median, which is the difference.
But, what I'm trying to convey to the public is your taxes are going up. They don't care about the median, they want to know about them. So, the normal house was worth 350. The median increase of that house...
I think we're thinking about this very differently.
Like, 28%. Nobody had a flat, right?
No, but we have a new median based on the rebound.
Yeah, but people want to know what's happening to their taxes. So, there, if your average Joe, an average Joe has a 350,000 dollar home, average Joe had an average...
Right, the median average person has a 391,000 dollar house.
Let me just finish. So, you have a 350 dollar house, one person, me, I have a 350 dollar house. My home value went up 28%. Just like everyone in town, because that's, average Joe went up 28%. My home value is now 390, right?
So, then, it's back to what you originally wanted to do, is just increase it by the percentage.
350 to 390, and then the taxes.
Why don't we say, we're, we're looking at the impact on taxes of the person who had the median house one year ago?
Yes.
And forget about the current median. So, now, we're saying...
So, then, yes, that would be an increase, but to say that everybody's going to have an increase, I just don't think is accurate.
Where the median taxpayer though will, from last year, have a tax increase.
If you're comparing to last year, that's probably accurate. I'd have to go back to where the basis of...
That's why we wanted the categories from the rebound company. So, 350 home, average increase 28%. 390, their taxes are going to go up 500. 450 home, average increase 28%, their new value is this.
Right, so then, it's just the columns G and H that you just want to see the straight percentage increase.
But it doesn't, my columns don't show, um, what the taxes are.
Oh, mine does. Hold on. Do you want me to try to resend it?
Yeah. Because everyone who's coming to me is saying, my house went up this, what will my taxes be? And everybody is seeing a tax increase. It can't be that there isn't a tax increase when we're spending more than we have in revenue.
No, I get what you're saying as far as the change from last year to this year, but you had said everybody's getting one, and I, I don't want to put that out there. I don't think that's true.
The median increase is only 11 or 12%. So, that's the, that's the difference, and that's why it's not apples to apples.
Alright.
From 350 to 390 is...
What we should be able to say is, if you have a 350 home, your tax, your value went up 28%, here's what your new taxes will be. If you have a 3, a 450 home, your tax, your home value went up 27%, here's what your taxes will be. How do we pick these numbers? Because they're averages. If you have a 750 home, your home value went up 40%, this is what your taxes are going to be for the average of each category.
But, at, at the end of the day, right, we've tried to make the point before that it's not the rebound that is causing taxes to go up. Right, we have 2.3 million dollars in new revenues from economic growth. We're going to spend 7 million dollars. And this is after last year when we kept taxes flat in order, we hoped, to mitigate the effect of additional borrowing this year. Uh, and notwithstanding those efforts, for nobody's fault, but because of, uh, fixed costs that have unexpectedly skyrocketed. We have, we're spending a lot more money, and taxes are going to go up. And whether the distribution of the taxes is, is, uh, favoring one group more than another, the fact is that our net revenues are going to have to increase by 7 million dollars. And that's really the message we're trying to convey. That is based on fixed costs and almost nothing else, and that makes it harder for people to live in the town. It makes it harder for us to, or the other boards to create initiatives to improve the quality of life. And we think that something like that is going to happen again next year because we expect similar increases to fixed costs. So, that's why we need cooperation from the other boards to help drive this down, some kind of action.
Well put.
I think that's right. I mean, one of the things, unfortunately, we can't show, but it's really not this year. I mean, this year's bad, but next year, I'm looking at a 5,000 increase in taxes. 5,000 you have, Amy.
Mm-hmm.
For?
A 450,000.
Ooh.
So, that's, the, the, this is crazy. So, we need to really get a handle on, if I had a house, my house went up 27%, I pay taxes this year, I'm paying taxes this year, what is it? If you came in a little better, your home value only went up 20%, your taxes will be lower. If you came in a little bit higher, your taxes are going to be higher, but that's what we need to show. It is not realistic. Nobody's house didn't change in home value, so median, everybody's home value went up, so their taxes are going up. I shouldn't say everyone, there may be one or two people whose taxes, whose home values didn't go up by as much, so maybe they'll be okay.
Headlines would suggest that we're going to be in some level of recession if we're not already in some level of recession. And at the same time, we're telling people their, you know, their taxes will go up over the next two years, you can almost guarantee it, so...
But not as draconian as 5,000 a year. We, that's just unacceptable. That's going to mean service cuts.
Well, so, why, why, why would we wait until next year?
Fair question. That's why we need to get those numbers a little bit more accurate and why we need to get the modeling, um, Amy?
That's not to say that people won't associate their tax increase with the rebound.
That's correct.
And, and so, I think Bert's point is, is, is really important that, um, you know, we're, we have grand list growth of net of rebound, uh, you know, of 2.3%. We're spending, it doesn't get us to 7%. So, I, I would suggest, it's not, it's not just what's above fixed costs. Now, we're looking to reduce fixed costs.
Correct.
So, where, where can we get that? And then, you know, and that's why I think the discussion about all the, you know, the, um, the funds as well. And then, you know, waiting for funds back because of audits, like, those are dollars that are, we can use, and it would be meaningful to this year and next year. I, I don't know what the answer is, but I think they're going to have to do better than a 30 basis point increase from what the tri board meeting was.
So, if we could go back to the old modeling where we showed and we could adjust the percent. You had a house, 350, went up 27%. Here's your new, I mean, basically, I gave you guys that, I sent it to you.
Yeah.
Because that shows what it's going to mean for individuals. And we can change those percentages. Amy, I'm open to hearing from you if you think that model is wrong.
I don't think the model is wrong. I think that you and I were just talking about two different approaches. And mine was median to median, because that's the way that we've always done it, and yours is what's last year look like compared to this year.
Because we're in a revale.
Right.
Median to median works when you're not in a revale year. So, for me, that's not a useful comparison because what I would hate to do is go out to people and say, you're going to have a huge decrease in taxes. And not one person comes to you and say, I had a huge decrease in taxes.
I, I think, yeah, you're, yeah, you're better off telling people that they're going to have an increase in taxes and not be too specific, but...
But we should show them the magnitude.
Oh, no, I know.
Because it's, these are big numbers. People are putting their kids through college, they're going to see a huge increase.
Yep.
And the drivers need to be explicit, which I think there are a lot of relying, salaries, especially teachers' salaries and health, right?
It's 80%.
Not that, yeah, I mean, one of the things I think people don't realize with the port of finance, we don't have anything to do with union settlements. They are what they are. Those are decided by the board of selectmen and the board of ed on recommendation of professional staff, and our job is to fund them. We are legally required to fund them. So, some things come to us requiring funding. It's true, we could reduce staff, but we have a legal obligation to fund services at a certain level, especially education. So, I don't think anyone's going to recommend we cut teachers. So, that means we have to fund what is given to us first, what we're legally required mandated, and that's that. Debt service is a legal obligation. The public overwhelmingly supported, Vladimir, that was anyone as well, voted for, so now you got to pay the piper, have to pay it. So, when you start with those fixed costs, and then you have to keep the lights on, right? And those are some contracts, energy contracts, we've looked into.
What, um, where did the, um, salaries come out at the last, uh, negotiation?
Percentage or...
Yeah, percentage increase over the next three years.
Amy?
For teachers?
Yeah.
It's like 11% over three years.
So, there's 2, 2.5 million in this year's budget, which is why it's so big, much bigger than it's been in the past.
So, yeah, almost 4% a year.
Yep.
So, I found the board of finance.
Yeah, on your feet, pretty impressive. Not a calculator, I'm very impressed, it's cool. But, but I think it's really important we be honest with people and explain to them, not that anyone wasn't being honest, but be as accurate to what people are going to actually experience. They're not some hypothetical median person, what's going to happen to my taxes. And then, the, the really alarming thing is what happens next year. And we need to understand that, I'm sorry, we can't see that, but those numbers are alarming.
Could you say a few words about why you expected the increases again next year?
Well, part of it is, I'm talking with Amy, right now, we're getting the motor vehicle revenue because it's a year of look back. So, even though our mill rate is lower, we get the reimbursement from last year when our mill rate is higher. Well, next year...
It'll be less.
It'll be zero, essentially zero. So, you lose 2 million in revenue there. You've got a million dollar increase in debt service, it's share 900,000, so that's 3 million right there in the hole. Then, you've got the negotiated salaries that were legally, I would have paid, those go up again, as you saw, 11%.
Almost 4%.
Yeah, over 4%, so another 2 million. And we're projecting grand list growth, as Francine said, was contracting, but maybe it'll be a little better because of Frank capturing some stuff. But...
That's around the edges.
New economic development growth is, is, is anemic, so...
Yeah, most likely wrong.
Especially to Derek's point, if we hit recession. So that's, and that's coming at a time where people at least afford to pay this increase. So my hesitancy going into this budget is to do any increases and to then next year say, and now cut. So you don't want to be in a position, so you got to look long term. Amy, what are we missing in this conversation? Is there anything we're not thinking about that we should be thinking about?
Let me just throw through the assumptions quick. I mean, there are a lot of assumptions here in the out years, like it's assuming a lot of, things are going up one and a half percent, which might not necessarily be true. And things could go up more. It has like gasoline and stuff going up around four percent, which could go up or down. It's just really where the assumptions lie for the majority of it. And then, as we get down, we've already taken out the C and R cash, so that's not an issue. Our pension is pretty much in line. So I think you've covered the major things.
I'm sorry, probably what?
Covered the major ones.
You've covered the major things.
Yeah, so that's sort of the alarming. I'm sorry, I'm really sorry. I apologize to the public, we weren't able to show this. Because this was a super important meeting to communicate to the public. Question is, does this board want to meet on Wednesday and go through the numbers and get with the new modeling, ask Amy to show us? Do we have a reel or do we want to do it in March, for people's schedules?
Meeting in eight days.
We want supplemental appropriation for a new cable.
Might be a cable, might be a laptop. It's debatable.
My laptop always worked, so it's a cable.
I'm, I'm out of town on Wednesday. This Wednesday.
I'm around.
Pardon?
I'm around.
That's four of us. Could you call in?
Um, what time?
We can be flexible.
If it's not too close to five o'clock, I can call in.
Could we do a five thirty, Amy, with your schedule on Wednesday?
I, I would prefer just normal time, which is.
Five forty-five?
Yeah, I'm skating out there as fast as possible.
We can do it at six.
Well, if, if we're just going to go over the, the Excel spreadsheet and it'll be like half hour, forty-five minutes, maybe a little bit more discussion, maybe an hour, like, I mean, it's.
Five forty-five.
Are people opposed to six?
Because I, I will be in transit to a hotel room. So, I mean, I've never driven in that area, so I have no clue how long it's going to take me to go from A to B.
Does six help you or?
I'll make five forty-five work one way or another. I'll set the expectation and be there, but I appreciate the flexibility.
Now, Amy, why don't you and I coordinate about the modeling? Just make sure we're on the same page of the modeling.
Yeah, because it's the same exact thing I did for tri board, so if you want something different, just let me know.
And just for my benefit, understanding that what you're, what you guys had versus what you're, just so I understand.
What I'm trying to do is show, what is a typical person going to experience in terms of tax increase, not some hypothetical, but a three fifty and someone else.
Yeah.
So it's working, right?
Right.
Do you want to live this?
We can. All right, going on to the minutes. I sent my proposed changes at the minutes for December thirteenth. Did anyone have any comments, changes?
I move to approve.
I moved by Bert, seconded by Ari. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Then January seventeenth, I added some proposed edits. I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
So moved, seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Is that it? Hot communications. We did get the pension plan fiduciary to use legal opinion. It did not state who was in charge of doing that policy. So I wasn't sure we got what we were looking for on the D E I from Bobby Prisenza. Does anyone want further follow-up? Are we satisfied with that opinion?
I'm sorry, I just lost my.
Okay, well, why don't we review that and get back to that on that, because that may require some follow-up. And then with the building committee, Amy is switching to monthly reports on non-quarterly reports. So we will include an update on the building projected revenues. We'll have that in December. The building committee, we get months, but it doesn't capture the full year projections. All right, so we may have a motion to call a special meeting on Wednesday, March first. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We will go ahead and call that meeting, special meeting to do budget modeling. Hopefully it won't be that long. Then after that, we just ask the clerk again to make sure you've recorded all requests from the board members. And we will treat those without objection as full request from the board going forward.
Like I said, just in terms of follow-up conversation with Matt presuming you're going to have one of those, what is, what do you plan on telling him for the?
Well, I could use some advice. I mean, I think, maybe the same thing, nothing's changed. The initial drama, the alarm is really in the out years. I mean, it's this year in general. I mean, we're really going to want to understand anything above fixed costs they have in the budget and the justification for it, because.
This year?
This year.
I mean, I think it's important to let them know that it's this year and then next year, we're going to be looking at a reduction of fixed costs.
If the modeling is accurate, which is, we can only go with the information. I mean, the one thing I always say to Matt and to the public is we try and base our decision-making based on resources and data that we have. We rely on Amy to get us the most accurate data, so we rely on Amy. But we use that data as accurate unless Amy tells us they're not accurate, but Amy, these are your best estimates. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So it is what it is. And I think the public just needs to hear this and understand what's going to happen. And so to the extent we can find out for an average person who had a, the median home, three fifty, the average increase in that price range was twenty-eight percent, here's what your taxes are going to be with your new home value. If your home value went up, you'll pay a little more. If your home value went down, you'll pay a little less. But that's the true median. It's the same house, their value went up. So.
Well, yeah, is that right? Because the outliers will have an effect on that. So you could have a larger increase on a bigger home or a larger increase on a smaller home that'll affect the median.
Exactly.
So it's not really the same house. It's not same store.
Well, that's why I put in the variations in there, so you can see, here's, here's what we think it is, it's twenty-eight, but here's what it is if it's twenty-five to less. So you can see the range of what your taxes could be for each individual.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah. That's a good exercise for the public.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, what we don't want to do is give, this is a brace for impact analysis. Here's what's coming, you should prepare yourselves. Look at your budgets. How are we going to do this? Now, you can look at it also monthly, five hundred a year increase in taxes is like a forty dollar a month. So maybe that is something they can do, right? Next year, if it's five thousand, it's five hundred, four hundred a month. Is that something you can do? I don't know. So we'll try and convey it in ways that people can understand it. But five hundred, you know, a year, over ten years, five thousand dollars, that's.
That's if taxes stay flat.
And if that is happening every year or more.
Yeah.
How do we sustain this? I mean, I.
The problem with sustaining it on the revenue side is the obligation to do so when you cannot cut a town vote to pay for a school. And the arbitration system takes care of salaries. Your scope for reduction is narrow and that's got to be shared with education and then the selectmen. That puts a huge amount of pressure on that remaining twenty percent.
Is fixed, what, what part of the budget is non-fixed cost, Amy?
Like twenty percent.
Like twenty percent?
Salaries and healthcare make up eighty percent of our budget, maybe seventy-five.
And benefits, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's probably range, yeah.
Eighty, eighty percent of, eighty percent of the town budget is fixed.
I think it's seventy, but eighty percent of board of ed. Somewhere there, seventy to eighty.
So the board of ed is about seventy percent of the overall budget?
Right, so we're.
That's what I'm saying, it's, oh, it's either, whatever, seventy-five or seventy-five. It's a big number.
Yeah. So are we being unreasonable? Am I seeing this wrong or am I seeing this realistically?
No, it's realistic if you're trying to show, you know, last year's comparison to this year's comparison, assuming nothing other than the budget's changed.
Because I think that's how individuals, when I talk to people, they don't care about someone else. They want to know what's going to happen to them. And the range. Okay, so we have.
But I, I will, I will tell you, I mean, only three percent of people who argued their assessment is telling to me too. I mean, they saw the twenty seventeen value, uh, assessment and they saw the twenty twenty-two assessment. They were big deltas.
Well, but to Bert's point, the problem is not the fairness of the evaluation process. The problem is the state.
Yeah, yeah, no, understood. But I'm saying selfishly as a taxpayer and total amount of money to be able to spend that, maybe people would have thought about it.
It takes some comfort and faith in the value, in the integrity of the evaluation process.
And still, but to Derek's point, if you have a kid in college and suddenly your taxes are three thousand, it's going to hurt. Yeah, it's going to hurt. There's just no way getting around that. Even when your kid's out of the house, absolutely. All right, so with that, we have a mission. I'll talk with Amy real quick afterwards and then we'll.
If, I mean, it sounds like, once we're able to see it, it'll be a lot more clear for everybody. But then if there's anything that comes up that we want to, like a discussion or something that we want to have, we can add it to the agenda.
More clear but not less painful.
Yeah.
Well, what we, I mean, this is very hard to communicate. As we saw here, these are people who, everyone in this room really knows the finance and it's hard for us to communicate it. So how do we communicate it to the public?
We'll raise our voices.
Well, on the other hand, you know, they are paying, I mean, everyone wants to support the teachers. I think everyone I've talked to was like, yeah, I'm willing to pay more taxes to do that. And the public already voted, I'm willing to pay more taxes for Latimer. So there are, so it's how we communicate that. But it's also looking into the future and as much as we want to do that, at some point affordability is going to become an issue, especially for our seniors. And it's going to depress home values if everyone else isn't going up the same as us, so.
And we didn't really convey that they were spending millions of dollars on Latimer and that year from now could be a five thousand dollar increase in their property taxes.
Well, hopefully that's not accurate. We'll try to.
No, I, I mean, that is a scenario, right? But, you know, and this much of the voting public actually showed up and actually voted.
That's, that's the other thing.
I know, and I have, it's way out of the bounds of the discussion.
Yeah, so we'll try and get the ranges, get the highlights in there so that we've got a model that shows the ranges. Yeah, it's twenty-eight, you might do a little more or a little less. Here's what it looks like to you. But, oh, by the way, next year, if things don't change. Now, one thing I'll say a positive, there is a proposal in the state legislature that does have some legs to increase education funding in general, the E C S number. Sims Barry's projection would be an additional two point two million. But that wouldn't be money you could spend, it would just be offset if we're looking at these budgets like this, but.
Well, it just means more burden on the tax state.
The money's got to come from somewhere, right?
It's going, either being taxed what, they have paid Peter.
Yeah, same income tax are slightly more progressive than the regressive property tax, but it's, you're right to your point, it's still a tax increase.
Yeah, yeah, it's coming from somewhere and that's the taxpayer.
So it's, so it's going to be a challenge, but our big thing is how do we communicate it in a way that people will understand how it impacts them personally, not so hypothetical.
Okay, we're going to kick it out of here.
Thank you.
Right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Seconded.